I'd like to call it order the Avalon City Council Meeting of Tuesday, July 15th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We usually don't do this, but in lieu of invocation, we would like to wish a happy birthday to Susie Bray. Hopefully you're listening out there. Happy birthday, Susie. The roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Ponse.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lavelle.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
City staff received nine written communications regarding item five, repeal and replace Article three of Chapter one of Title III of the Avalon Miss book code modifying the transient rental licensing system, and one copy regarding item seven cruise ship port agreements. Copies have been made and were dispersed to City Council. They are filed in the City Clerk's office.
Excellent, thank you. Department head reports.
Good evening, Council. Jamie Milak, Maiden Superintendent for Public Works. I'll be filling in for Jackie since she had the day off today. So anyway, as you know, Public Works worked hard on planning and executing the Fourth of July parade. We get involved with setting up the parade route, monitoring the parade route during the parade, and then of course the tear down and cleanup. So big thanks to Jeffy Hernandez. He kind of heads that up for Public Works and he does that every year and does a great job. Good job to the crew. Public Works team, as you know, this is back to repainting all the street markings throughout town. It's a kind of a long tedious process. They got to get it early for the traffic starts and just kind of hit the spots one by one. So we're powering through it. We're almost done with that. We also started updating some of the faded red curbs you've been seeing throughout town that really need to get redone. So we're working on that this week as well. Working on a couple sewer repairs. We've got one near the Burma Trail, but although the Burma Trail there we can be working on. We're also assisting the Island Company with a sewer lateral repair in front of the steamer trunk. And our part of that is mainly done. So the Island Company's got a contractor coming in to complete that job. We recently completed some safety training with CERA that went really well. Updated a lot of our safety with their guys, so sorely needed. And we are, Public Works's team is also working with Edison and Perk installing new communication systems for the city's wastewater system. This is primarily relocating antenna up near the Three Palms area. So we'll be working on that over the coming weeks. And then we are also working with N2W Engineering and developing climate change plan to meet our permitting requirements. Any questions? All right, thanks, everybody.
No, thank you.
Good evening, Council, City Staff. Scott, welcome. Michael Alagria, Fire Chief, City of Avalon. Over the Fourth of July, we had a busy weekend. Ran about 30 calls total, medical calls that whole weekend. One night on the Fourth, they had six calls after midnight, six medical calls after midnight. So six people had way too much fun that night. On the Thursday night, Friday morning at 1:37 a.m., we had a report of smoke in the area of the wastewater plant. We had a small battery in the MRF, in the dump. They were compacting recyclables. And what was it, Andy? Take a wild guess. What caused it?
That battery, that whatever.
Lithium ion battery, correct. So luckily, no damage, very small. Guys knocked it down, tore all the trash apart, soaked it down. We also had a pretty good golf cart crash on Wrigley Terrace Road just past the steps at the bottom of the cross. Found out where it was. That caused an amputation of a foot.
Oh my God.
At the ankle. So just remind, there's a lot of rental carts, a lot of speeding, a lot of drinking going on that luckily this person will hopefully be okay. But just one of the many calls the guys have done a great job on handling and flying out of here. Any questions?
No, but thank you. We enjoyed riding in the parade.
You're welcome.
Thank all of you for that. Well, thank everybody for every part of the Fourth of July, including Elena in the back.
And that always reminds me of when people are riding in golf carts and they have their foot hanging out.
Oh, they do.
I'm like, oh my God, why do you do that?
I know.
Good evening, Mayor, City Staff, City Council. Since our last council meeting, been very busy actually. We had quite a few domestic violence arrests. We had four total, three of them felonies and one was a misdemeanor. We had two arrests for warrants. We had one arrest for drunken public, one arrest for terrorist threats or criminal threats. See if you call terrorist threats, now it's criminal. And we had an assault on one of our deputies who was arrested for that as well. We had 150 observations made by the deputy, which includes like traffic stops and patrol checks and PED stops. And there were 99 calls for service from the public. We made 20 traffic stops. There were six citations written. And we did two citations for camping, tenting, you know, on the beach area. And I'd like to just make an announcement for August 6th. Here, right across the way at the Fire Department parking lot, we'll do our national night out here instead of Front Street. For the last two years, we did them on Front Street and to be honest with you, I don't care for it there for this particular event because I want it more for the community and not so much for the tourists. So and also we'll be able to have more departments from the city there. So it should be a bigger event than usual and I just, we got to work it out. So we'll start doing social media as soon as possible and maybe get the community to show up and have some hot dogs.
So now that Sergeant Klein is no longer with us, we noticed there was no police blotter on whatever we call that on Friday. Is somebody going to take the reins on that?
Yeah, I have a little bit mixed emotions about the Sheriff's Law personally. Reason being is I've written it a few times in the past and as much as I like it and the community likes it, to be honest, it'll probably come back. I'm not a big fan of putting people out there by their name and advertising to the public that they're being arrested. That's not something that I prefer. And when I've actually voiced my concerns. When I voiced my concerns with the paper, it was basically, no, either you give us the names or we're not going to publish it. So I'm going to work with Charles and kind of figure out a way to kind of, I don't mind talking about the arrests. I'm just really not a fan of saying, hey, this is, my neighbor was arrested for this and, you know, my employee.
Yeah, I know. But there have.
I'll be putting out stuff later on, but I'm still kind of working on the transition period.
There have not been names put in the paper.
I'm sorry?
I haven't seen names in the paper, especially two Fridays ago, there was a lot of action. No names at all were on there. I don't know that it has to be as elaborate and as joyous as they used to make them, but I think people need to know kind of what's going on in town.
Sure.
And I would agree on that. They really don't put in names.
That's just recently stopped.
But the flippant comments are a little irritating. It just, it takes away the seriousness of what it is.
I agree with you. And that's also a concern as well. It's making light of certain situations is fun, but it does get offensive to a certain percentage of the population and I'm really not a fan of that.
That's all I have to say. Thank you. And you're out in force on the Fourth of July, thank you. Even though you say you didn't have all of those people, you had all your crew out there on the segways and they were, they were doing their business. It was good. Yeah, thank you. I know. Go to the next one.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. I apologize for being late. I was on the phone with the Coast Guard and I prefer not to hang up on them, so I apologize for that one. So I guess the most important thing is, last time we talked was Fourth of July went, knock on wood, relatively smoothly. You know, a couple of things we had to deal with here and there, but overall, in my opinion, pretty well. We're obviously very busy. We're sold out the whole time, basically Thursday through Saturday night into Sunday. Since the last time we have, well, for the month of July, so the last two weeks, basically, we've had 1,047 boats arrive for a total of 4,250 mooring nights, which compared to last year at this time is a little bit lower, but not real significant. We also have our sanitation workers, you've probably seen them out there. I call them the Orange Crush, cruising around. Actually, we have a really good crew, super friendly and they're working really hard. We've got them working on the pier spikes, so if you hear a little bit of pounding in the morning, that's just that we're trying to take care of those spikes that are, you know, working. It's kind of like playing whack-a-mole on the pier because you whack this one and one comes up over here. But it will definitely keep them busy. It's functional fitness. Our harbor maintenance, we did a little adjustment over at the mole ramp three, a little issue there, but they've taken care of that and they did a great job. Boats were in, express boats were in every hour. They were able to get in and out and not interrupt the boat service and get that problem taken care of. So I got to give them a big old thumbs up for that. And then last but not least, we're doing the final touchups on Barbara Pearson. We've got a little bit of concrete work to do there and then we will do our ribbon cutting once that's done. So stats, total of 264 calls for service since the last time we met, 165 security patrols, 25 enforcement calls, two emergency medicals, and three Baywatch assists. Any questions?
I just wanted to thank you. We received an email from a boater about the wake. Thank you for getting on that and working with them.
I apologize for its length, but.
But no, I know that you took care of that and it not getting to be this big thing. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just have a couple of the main revenue numbers that I want to share. I don't have the full visitor revenue report out, but I'm happy to report hotels for the month of May were up five and a half percent, as well as cross-channel carriers up 6.8%. So we're still compiling the rest of the May figures, but just wanted to report some positive news. Too early to tell with June, so we'll see when those numbers come in, unless there's any questions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. This doesn't want, there we go. So we had the Fourth of July. It was a fun event this year. Seemed like everything went really well, very safe. I want to be able to thank Public Works for all the preparation that they put in to make sure their streets are ready for this, as well as the fire and the Sheriff's Department to make sure that everything went smoothly and safely. I really want to be able to thank my staff. They're the ones who really make this happen. I'm the guy who comes up with the idea. They're the guys who execute with the decoration, as well as on-day logistics of getting carts in place and people in place. And so I really appreciate their hard work, so really want to thank my staff. I want to thank the Chamber and all the businesses and individuals who helped to make this event a truly community event. Without them and the support that they give, we would not be able to do this, so I appreciate them. We had a, I want to thank the entertainment of the day from DJ Nasby to Catalina Eddie Los Islanos, as well as the USC band for coming all the way over and entertaining us again for 35 years. And to give out a few shout outs winners, we had, for most patriotic was the Gilmore family. We have for best of parade was Dan's Tech and Catalina Health won Best of Things. Congratulations to all of them. We did have a delay on the fireworks, some of you might have noticed. That came from some extra testing that had to be done that the technicians weren't quite prepared to do and then had to kind of learn and do it. But they were able to get it done and we were able to have a pretty flawless fireworks show. So just to let you all know what happened there. We've currently put these 18 by 24 inch signs on the back of all lifeguard stands that alerts all beachgoers of the new rules because, you know, a lot of people were saying they weren't posted, so we went ahead and created them and put them there. They're quite large and they're very colorful, so you can't, you can't miss them. Pretty much all our summer programs right now, full blast, from our day camp to our yogas on the beach, to our beach days, to our funky Fridays. They seem to be attended very well by our visitors, as well as our local community. So I'm happy to see that those events still are viable and is making our community and our town a lot more fun to be at. A couple of events that we're working on right now is we're working on trying to make this 50th anniversary of JAWS, the showing, happen. I'm working right now with the lifeguards on how we can do this on the water. And so look out for another crazy idea from us. And then also we're partnering with Catalina Rum Company to create an end of the year Beach Bash. We're kind of choosing the date right now. They want to be sponsors of it, so look out for that as well. And this Thursday, Councilmember Lavelle and I will be going to 88 for 28, which will be seeing how we can partner and be best utilized for the Olympics coming in 2028. Is there any more questions or anything?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Dave, I was just curious about one thing. I know that we had problems with the behavior on the float for the kids out there, the little plastic inflatable one and all that kind of stuff. And then we used to have just the platform and all that kind of stuff. And we removed it for obvious reasons. And also I heard that lifeguards were saying that where the position was for that was dangerous because of the backwash from the express boats and all that kind of stuff. And also there's no lifeguard on that right side beach, South Beach, right?
I believe during the day there is a lifeguard on South Beach.
Okay.
And they have the lifeguard that's in the middle that watches both sides and then they have one that's actually right on the beach.
Okay. I was just wondering if it was possible, have you looked into the idea of maybe putting it on the left side of the pier?
On Middle Beach?
Yeah, so just a little plaything for the kids on that side because it seems like lifeguards could yell at the troublemakers a lot easier. It wouldn't, the backwash from the boats wouldn't be hitting that. I mean, you'd still get harbor wake and all that stuff, but not as much as the other side. But just curious if you looked into it? Would it have not? Can you?
The main reason we haven't put one on that side, we can do something that would be kind of more of a toddler type. It's just not deep enough on that side, yeah, to be able to have some of the apparatuses that we've had in there before. You need at least eight feet, yeah, of clearance underneath. And a lot of times you can walk right out to that line to your waist. And so you can do something like a toddler, you know, where they just kind of walk on and have a little slide. But something that would be at the magnitude that we had out at South Beach, we would not be able to have those apparatuses out there.
Okay, gotcha. Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to piggyback off of the lithium ion battery fire at the Publey Beach landfill in the MRF. Just wanted to remind folks to properly dispose of lithium ion batteries, whether they're from an e-bike or your cell phone or any e-waste. Our hazardous, household hazardous waste facility is open on Wednesdays from noon to 3:00 p.m. And then if you have household batteries, like AAA batteries, AA batteries, et cetera, we do have a collection bin here at City Hall in our lobby area, so we'd be more than happy to collect those from you. And then we don't have a date finalized yet, but in October, we do plan on housing another bulky item, hazardous waste drop off event here at City Hall, so we can properly dispose of things like lithium ion batteries, so. And then today, I want to give a shout out to our Public Works mechanics crew and code enforcement. They did a roundup of abandoned vehicles and ended up towing 13 total to our city tow yard. Seven motorcycles, two vehicles, and four golf carts were taken off the street today. So thanks to them. And then we have a request for information published right now. We're looking for mobile applications for edible food recovery and food donations that happen in our city. So we've had challenges with volunteers and whatnot, so we're hoping if we utilize technology, that could be a way to better connect food resources to those who need it here on the island. The request for information is due July 25th at 2:00 p.m. And if anybody out there has any questions, feel free to email me, jfrancis@cityofavalon.gov. And we are very close to finalizing negotiations for the Civic Center Housing Project, and I just want to give kudos to BBK for helping us negotiate that agreement, so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Council Mayor. Just a couple of things tonight because I know I'll be speaking at length later on, but tomorrow night we have Planning Commission scheduled. And for that meeting, we have a continuation of a public hearing on one of the revocations. There was an issue of whether or not, back in, I think, 2012, that that property actually received a CUP. We were able to track down the records and the DVD from that meeting, determine, resolve that issue. So there was never one issued in that case. It was actually denied by the Planning Commission. So we resolved that. That'll be before returning to the Planning Commission. Then they have a site plan variance for 358 Cloresta Avenue. And Assistant City Manager Francis will be giving Planning Commission an update on the landfill expansion project, just to, even though that's going to be before LA County planning, we just want to bring Planning Commission up to speed and that'll be the first of the public outreach on that project as we work through it. Also, just to advise Council and the public that Fire Department and Public Works, Bob Greenlaw, has done an analysis of the parking essentially on Avalon Canyon Road from the sand trap up to the stables. They've been marking roadways to try to get that parking a little more organized, designate parking for specifically autoettes, certain side of the street for vehicles, and then marking red lines to give enough sightline view for people coming in and out of the sand trap, coming in and out of some of those entrance ways along there. So look for that line striping to start here in the next day or two and we'll get some signage up too along there.
Now, that doesn't include at all the street in front of the hospital?
It's going to go up that way towards the school also. Yes. Yeah, we're going both directions from that point up towards the school and then up towards the stables. Yes. And then just for the public, we have a special council meeting scheduled for July 24th, next Thursday, starting at 4:30. We have at least one item, that being the intergovernmental transfer request from the hospital. That's still going forward. And then if we are in a position between now and then to have labor MOUs brought to Council, we'll also put them on that agenda. So are there any questions?
The Attorney?
Dave covered the matter by special, especially the hospital loan that we're finalizing in negotiations tomorrow.
Councilmember reports.
I'll go first. Thanks for putting the signs on the back of the lifeguard stands, but a question was asked to me and I wasn't real sure. If who, if people are not following what we've put into place, who do they go to? Who do they try to flag down to?
Well, if code is available, if they see code out there, certainly code enforcement. And then I know Harbor is also, when they're not tied up.
Okay, that's what I told them, try to find code, and then Harbor.
Yep.
Because I guess somebody had put up a can, not really a tent, but something with walls. And they also used sandbags to hold it down and they never used it. They just blocked it.
Right.
And people were tripping over, so, but they didn't know who to contact. And then, and I know Dave and I had talked about this because at the end of the parade, there was an incident, but the parade can't end at Third and Clarissa. We need to continue it on somewhere that they, that's not where they end it because it just gets crazy, just too many people trying to come in, trying to go out, parade people trying to come in. So I thank you for doing that. And then we, another letter that we also received was in regards to smoking in golf carts. The golf carts say no smoking. That means no smoking while you're driving around in a rental golf cart. Fire on this island is a scary thing, something that we've lived through that we don't want to live through again. So if you see people smoke and tell them to put it out, it's just ridiculous that they need to smoke on a tour in an open air golf cart, especially up on the hills. So that's all.
Go ahead. The only thing I wanted to actually request of us, the Council, and as well as the City Manager, if we would be willing to write a letter of support for the initiative for the Boys and Girls Club. We are trying to follow or fall under the umbrella of a city to take us on. We are hoping it to be in Long Beach, so we are going to present to them at the end of the month. And I believe if we show a letter of support, it would just shows like we're all on the same page of how much is this needed for our community. I've gone ahead and actually reached out to all our representatives and I've gotten the green light and they will also be writing a letter of support, so that'll be very helpful.
Fantastic.
Okay, I don't really have much to report out, but I want to suggest maybe a possible agenda item with a public comment to go along with these things, just because town is. Just because town is growing like crazy and all that kind of stuff. I know everybody hates it, but it feels to me like it might be time for stoplights at the crosswalks by Coney Island and by the donut shop at the end of the Elbow. It's, sometimes, the line in front of Coney Island can go all the way to Via Casino Archway and be like 15 minutes long, and people are just doodly-dodling along. So, anyway, I know that this town has never had one, and people are very proud of that. And I kind of love that, too. But it's 2025, and it's getting a little out of hand. So I think if we can put that on the agenda and have public comment and get a feel for where the town wants to go.
The funny thing is, it's not the golf carts that are causing the problem, it's the pedestrians. So if we-
Yes, that's what I mean.
If we had a pedestrian sign that said, "No walk."
Exactly, yeah, something like that, just, yeah. Some way to convey-
If I walked in the real world, just walked into the street, I'm going to get hit.
I know, right? And I love what they did, what Bob and everybody did at the elbow, you know, with that wide crosswalk. But there's like 5 million crosswalks along there. And it's actually kind of, that one that goes across the middle is kind of dangerous because people just kind of dart. You know, you think that they're going straight and going to continue to the trailhead, but then they just kind of make a left. And I've had to cram on my brakes a couple of times, even though I'm not going fast, but still, it's just like, so anyway, I'd like to get some feedback on that and see what we can do about that. And then, the second thing is born out of safety concerns. And God knows, I hate these two, but it feels to me like it's time for some of these speed bumps, especially on Whitley. The other day, because I live on Whitley, so I see this all the time, people fly down that hill. I mean, screaming fast, fly down that hill. And there's a lot of people that live there, there's a lot of vacation rentals, you know, so there's people that aren't familiar, there's kids, all this kind of stuff. And then yesterday, I saw this guy doing a wheelie on a motorcycle, you know, all the way up. It was crazy. So, I'd like to have community feedback on that, too, just because I see where mine is. But I think Marilla would probably benefit from a speed bump or two, and possibly somewhere on the flats. I don't know. But I would just like to have the community weigh-in on both of those issues, if possible.
And along that line, Avalon Canyon Road, of course. And I know that, spoke with Bob Greenlaw a long time ago, and I think the Fire Department as well, there's something other than a speed bump that might be helpful, you know, but I think they might have ideas on what some other-
Yeah, some sort of speed deterrent.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. I agree.
And so, that's about it for me.
Just a few things. One, to jump on that discussion, that's actually something I've been thinking about for a while. And a friend was in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, and sent me an image of flags they use for a street that doesn't have crosswalks. It's a three-way, only one stop, but then a thoroughfare, so you have to like figure out when you're going to go to not get hit. So they literally provide people with orange, like hunting color orange, flags to utilize as they're walking through the intersection to avoid getting hit. And another city-
The other side?
And then there's another pole, yeah, it's like a, it's a flat, it's like a street post. Yeah. Another city I saw in Canada actually has a stack of bricks to use as a deterrent for people running them over. So you just walk with the brick held up in front of them, so that they know that you're not going to stop them with a brick. I don't think we have to go that far, but thought it was a little comedic. So anyway, I would love to see something that still looks, sorry, it's a little crazy, right? Something that looks old-fashioned, that fits our town, that's not so digital and crazy, but a little walk, don't walk, right? I think people otherwise, I don't know, we were, when we were little, we were taught to, you walk with the crowd, and if that means you let someone else go first and then you walk, you do that. But people are not doing that at all. It doesn't register that they shouldn't walk, which is fine. We did not have our land connectivity meeting this month, however, did get one challenge on the application that's currently in front of the CPUC, literally the night before the challenge period ended. It was the only challenge that we received. It sounds like there's some workarounds to make it still work, so we're still moving forward and hoping to hear back on results from that application for subsea fiber within the next, I would hope, probably four to six weeks. As David Hart mentioned, I'll be attending 88 for 28 in downtown LA on Thursday. And that's an initiative, again, to get all 88 cities of LA County to interact with the Olympics and have some type of presence to support the Olympics. The City of Santa Cruz, Gabby, the city clerk, provided us with a letter request from the City of Santa Cruz regarding offshore drilling and oil issues. And I ask that we please go ahead and write a letter of support for that. And also, look at the resolution that they have put in place, and look at a similar resolution for us here, if we can have that on a future agenda item, please. I'm excited to hear the night out is going to be on a Wednesday this month, this coming month. Thank you for having it on a night where we can actually attend. I really appreciate that. I've wanted to attend for the last five years, and it's always on a Tuesday, so we never get to go. So, I am excited to get to attend my first night out. That's going to be fun. A reminder for everyone, if you could put on your calendar, September 3rd and 4th is Gateway Cities Cog Retreat here. It's a Wednesday, Thursday. You're welcome to attend. It's an agendized meeting. And I have asked City Manager Maystor if he can make some time available to attend that as well. It's the meeting where we set policy for the upcoming year. And with the Housing Trust and a number of other initiatives, including the homelessness initiative that we're working on, I think it's something that could really be beneficial for here. And then, I think that was everything that I had for now. Yeah.
I would just like to comment, on the public safety side and whatever, until we have some system of people doing better, I really would encourage the Sheriff's Department on those busy days, and we know when they are, to be on the corner of Clarissa and be on Metropole and Crescent and do a little traffic control, because in our municipal code, they are the only ones that can do traffic stuff. It's not code enforcement that's supposed to be the traffic cops. So if law enforcement could really help in those areas, we know from about 11 o'clock, you know, and all they have to do is walk down the street or one, do a little bit, and then continue to walk and visit the other merchants, and then go down there and do a little bit of crowd control and traffic control. It would be very helpful for those places. So, and at least until we get some things going. That's all I have. Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Paul's not here. Jim, nothing?
Just a reminder that we will have the second in our summer concert series this coming Saturday night on Wrigley Stage. The band is Knight Rider. Beer Garden opens at 7:00, concert begins at 8:00.
Thank you. Okay, consent calendar.
Thank you. First item on the consent calendar is approval of the minutes from July 1st, 2025, for a regular City Council meeting. Item two, approval of total expenditures for June 23rd, 2025, through July 4th, 2025, totaling $1,044,019.58. Item three, adopt a resolution accepting a grant from the State Department of California, Department of Parks and Recreation, Division of Boating and Waterways, Boating Infrastructure Grant Program, and authorize the City Manager designate or designate to execute a grant agreement. And that's in the amount of $300,000 grant.
One, so it's your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve items one through three on the consent calendar.
For a second.
I'll take it.
Call for the vote. Item number four?
Item number four is a public hearing. Public hearing to receive comment on the city's fiscal year 2526 Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program. And just for residents and councils' information, this is the first time that the city has participated in the LA County Community Development Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program. And per the terms of that, we have to have a 30-day public notice. That's been done, and this amount, while it's only $13,969, we hope that this is the first, and we'll keep working on this program.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. I will close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the city's estimated fiscal year 2526 Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program award of $13,969, and adopt the resolution authorizing the allocation of permanent local housing allocation PLHA funds for fiscal year 2526.
For a second.
Second.
Jay, for housing money.
Call for the vote.
Paul Eyes?
Item number five?
Item number five, under General Business, is a repeal and replace of Article III of Chapter I of Title III of the Avalon Municipal Code, modifying the transient rental license system. And just present the staff report on this item. First of all, I just want to point out that this has been an ongoing item for both staff in City and Planning Commission, and, you know, walk, I just want to walk back a little bit into 2020. And in 2020, the City of Avalon modified the process, of which it monitors and regulates transient rentals. And we went from the CUP format to the TRL format. You know, while I wasn't here at that time, I think, looking back on that, that was a, you know, a brilliant move by council and to do that, because it was the start of the process to get away from a property base that would travel with the property to a license-based system. And that was only really five years ago. And I think at the time, I can only assume that the thought at the time was, this is going to take some time to do this, it's going to take some sales, it's going to take some transfers in order to make this switch over. And I think it was mentioned at one of our meetings that we held on this by Jordan Lake, that, you know, this has only been a few years. And it's only been a few years, you know, if you look back when we instituted the moratorium, so that was two years ago, so in 2023, so really, only from 2020 to 2023 was that in place, in order to kind of put the brakes on a system where the ability to transfer these would have kept going on with the property. So, you know, that being said, has brought us to this point. So over the last two years, we have had a moratorium in place on transient rentals. And I think, as I look at this, the biggest drawback we have, we as a city have had to regulate these is the enforcement end of it, okay? And the enforcement end of it, from the standpoint of, you know, we have regulations on the books, we have noise regulations, we have things that the city and we could have done. The majority of these complaints that come through, come through on Friday nights, Saturday nights. We don't have staff on. We get phone calls in Monday morning. And that was the biggest drawback in order to truly monitor and regulate these. So, first and foremost, what the city has already done is we've worked with host compliance. We've expanded both the cost and the services we are receiving from them. We have already committed to them and went into a contract with them for a 24/7 monitoring system for these units. And this is going to give us the ability to put some teeth to real-time monitoring, accepting real-time complaints by a live body that will then be able to follow up with the onsite manager. And as we walk through this, I think that that is going to be the biggest change that we're going to have here, because everything that we have on the books and the new things we've added, we'll now be able to enforce. So if we can just walk through some of these, and I don't want to go back too much, but in, you know, as we started with the moratorium, we initially started with that 45-day moratorium. We expanded it for the balance of that year, we expanded it another year. During this time, we've held community meetings to discuss short-term rentals in September of 2023. From December of '23 through the end of January of '23, we conducted a survey. And that survey resulted in 595 responses, which was a tremendous response. And we were able to take those responses and really boil down to what the residents and the responders were interested in. And I want to say that many of the responses we got were from short-term rental owners. The ones that own it, that are doing it the right way, that vet their guests, that are onsite, that are actively involved, they're doing it the right way. That is the majority of these. It's the ones that are a problem, the known party houses that we see, the people that are really not connected to the community are the ones that we get the complaints upon. So we went through those survey results with both the Planning Commission and City Council. And, you know, as we walked through this, you know, we looked at a number of different ways to attack this. And first and foremost, one of the responses that we were receiving that was quite common was to put in a cap. And in order to put in a cap, we really felt it was critical, obviously, to find out how many of these we truly had. And this is when we ran into the problem or discovered the reality of what we had here in the city, which was, there was a large number of these that either been grandfathered in or received a CUP that weren't on our radar because they weren't actively renting. We looked at the, and there was 95 of these that we were able to identify. So the way we viewed that is, that's essentially 95 little ticking time bombs, that if they were sold and they go online as an active short-term rental, they weren't even on our radar, and they could have, they could have been out there and they could have been impacting us significantly. So, that is, you know, we went through the history of this, which took quite a bit of time, and that's when we started approaching the Planning Commission and went through the revocation process. So, we revoked, we went, started with 95 and revoked the vast majority of those. And the only properties that weren't revoked are those that have long-term tenants in those properties, and we maintain those. And those properties do have leases on active file with the city. So that leaves us where we currently are, which is a total of 363 active short-term rental units in the city. And of those 363, we looked at, well, we know we have some that have the business license and pay the minimum TOT, just to maintain their CUP status. So, we looked at how many of those simply paid the minimum three days of TOT in the course of a year. And we're easily able to identify 32 of those properties, leaving us with what we would determine to be 331 active CUP, or active short-term rentals in the city. That number, while, you know, it's close to 17, 18% of probably the available housing stock in the city, it's much better than where we were with well over 400 with the others. Then we started working on, okay, how do we start, you know, amending the ordinance so we can start monitoring these? And like I said, first and foremost, we wanted the 24/7 live call center. That, we've already instituted that, we're in the process. As you can imagine, there's a lot of data that we have to provide host compliance, so they have everything at their fingertips, from phone numbers to addresses, to onsite managers, to contact information to the sheriffs, to all of that. We're getting them that, getting them an itemized map, so they can respond to calls in real time. So we're in the process of doing that. We expect that to be live, hopefully by September 1st, but early fall. And then we looked at, what can we do to add a little more teeth to this? Because now, we're going to be able to say, we're going to get monthly information from host compliance, saying, these properties violate the noise ordinance. We called onsite manager, either A, the onsite manager didn't pick up within 30 minutes or return our call, or they didn't fix the problem within 30 minutes. Then we can document that as a strike one, and we can issue citations at that point. But more importantly, we can create a databank against these short-term rentals that we can use to move forward with revocation of active short-term rentals for violations of our ordinance. So we've put that in place. We've put in place, you know, I know another issue that came up during the survey and during some of the conversations with council was having single owners owning multiple short-term rentals. And, you know, what we did is, we separated the idea of a cap, the idea of increased fee, and the idea of these multiple single ownerships. And the second item that we're going to discuss tonight, item six, but item five, we really want to focus on the existing regulations that we have on the books. So we certainly want to have the discussion on those other three items. But item five is concerning the regulations and, you know, that we've given a little bit of teeth to Planning Commission, still allowing Planning Commission to have some discretion on these. And I think that, you know, Planning Commission now going through the revocation process, seeing the impact of these, definitely has a much better idea. They haven't had a short-term rental come in front of them in the last two- They haven't had a short-term rental come in front of them in the last two years. During that time, we've had a total of 20 that are on a waiting list, ready to be heard when the moratorium is up. I don't know, I have no reason to believe all 20 of those would be granted. I think planning commission has the tools in the current ordinance to not grant them based on impact to surrounding communities, neighboring properties, the city overall. And, you know, I have no reason to believe that they won't institute some of that. We saw this in the early summer of 2023 before the moratorium went into effect. Planning commission did start taking a little harder look, in my opinion, at some of these. There was some members of planning commission addressing them as relates to the impact and overall impact. So, that's where we're at. I mean, the changes of the ordinance, I know we'll talk about those. But the next step on these is, you know, we'd ask council to, to review the ordinance. If you have some proposed changes, if you have language changes, we can try to make attempts to incorporate those tonight. So, we can have this ready to go and adopt the ordinance on August 5th. If we adopt it on August 5th, it'll be, go into effect 30 days after adoption. And then I want to have discussion, or we'll have discussion on the next item regarding those other non-legislative items, those other three items to discuss. And I'm certainly open from council and the residents for any discussion.
I have one little question on six. Increase the annual minimum stay from three nights to 10 nights. Okay, so, right now, they can say, I rent, I rent it for $100 a night and give us 12. But now they can rent it for 10 nights and give us 120. How do we, and we know that's not realistic in what they're charging. How, what kind of, what can we do about that?
Well, with, without totally revealing the inner workings of host compliance, host compliance does a pretty good job of monitoring those that get advertised, those that, and the prices that they're advertised for. So, we know the active ones and they base it on reviews, they can see the number of reviews, they stayed there the week of June 1st through the 8th and here, you know, and so that's, they're running all that data through there and they can tell us that. So, we know right now that the 32 that we see, that we get the $12 check for once a year, we have a pretty good reason to believe they're not renting. But they're also not impacting the neighborhood either. So, it's this balance of, do we want to, you know, chase those away because they're, they're not renting, but they're also not negatively impacting by actively renting, you know, 180 days? So, we, we would like to do that, but that's why we're trying, and we figure if we increase it to at least 10 days, it's a little more commitment from the property owner. And we also think that an increase in the fee, which we'll have that discussion shortly, will also make a bigger commitment.
So, on that line, the 23 you said, are those TRLs or CUPs?
The 32, those would be CUPs. Because there's no real advantage to bank a TRL.
Right. So, there lies the rub. Because, you know, if it's a CUP sitting there, and we all know that that is valuable, so it drives up the price of the house. So, they're just hanging on to it so that they can sell their house for more money. So, if they have the luxury of doing that, I don't know, I think we should make the minimum more than 10 days. I think we should make it like 180 if they, if they, and if they don't want to do it, then surrender your CUP.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I think we can probably incentivize them better in a higher fee because the 180, you know, you get into the 180, you have some right now that aren't, that are pretty active. I mean, if you operated 90 days through the summer, that's only half of the 180. I mean, we have active ones now that aren't doing that, that I, that I think if the fee was more than just an annual business license fee of $54, which is all it is right now, I think if you had a higher fee, which truly reflects the impact of our time, code's time, the expense with host compliance, enforcement action, all of these things. And this is what we're working on. So, the next round of fees is due in January. We expect prior to that to bring you, you know, an analysis of what those fees truly should be.
Okay, because, yeah, because I was looking for the fee and I danced all around the municipal code and it said, "to be approved by council" and, you know, what did I, and then it's like, "base tax rate." Well, what's the base tax rate? Plus this, and I never, it's not really spelled out in the fee schedule or anywhere.
It's a business license.
So, it's only $54.
It's, it's the business license fee in the fee schedule. Just like if you came in and you were starting, you know, a notary business and getting a business license with the city.
Right.
It's just the business license fee.
Well, that, according to the fee schedule, that says, where is it? Conditional use permit parentheses transient rental each 37, oh, that's for a CUP. Yeah, I never found the business license.
Yeah, it's just the business license. It's very nominal.
What we have to do is, part of, part of the thing with all the recent cases is, we have to, if it's going to be a fee, it has to be based on the actual cost of administering that license. And so, we'll be working with Matt, coming up with that, looking at all the costs involved in that. Anything above a fee is a tax and that needs to be approved by the voters. So, we're going to come up with a, a, a modern fee that covers all the costs, present that to council. And then if it's the council's desire to do anything above that, that would be, that would be a tax that would go before the voters.
So, we are only addressing item five right now, we're not talking about, even though we kind of just stepped on it, but we're, we're going to talk about six a little later.
Well, let me ask, does anybody have comments on agenda item number five?
Good evening, mayor and city council, city manager. First of all, Chuck Wright is in the hospital. He underwent a four-hour emergency surgery last night and Debbie is with him, so she asked me to speak on her behalf. And she prepared this, so I'm going to go with what she said. First of all, Debbie wants to acknowledge our amazing, caring first responders who are always there for Chuck and who always take such good care of him. She wants you to know that they are immensely grateful to you. Given that oversaturation is not exactly on the agenda, she would like to raise some questions regarding that. And she provided a map, which you all should have, and notes from Debbie. As you will see on the map in front of you, the homes are highlighted in yellow. And these homes are those that are currently vacation rentals, with the exception of the hotel with the rooftop deck. The ones in orange represent the ones who have applied for a TRL or who soon will. She says, when referring to us, she's speaking about their home and their neighboring residents. On Lower Clarissa, behind them is the Seacrest Inn with the rooftop deck. Next to that is a vacation rental. Next to them is a vacation rental with a top deck that is located on the back of the house. And next to them, there's a large white house with a huge front porch and a second-story deck directly behind them. There are no backyards and no alleyways behind us. These four houses that are rentals are two feet away from their bedroom. Next, on Lower Descanso, you will see another five vacation rental homes that are in front of them or next to us, three of which have decks on the second story of the houses. Noise carries in the flats, sheriffs are called, and some neighbors sleep with earplugs. In addition, there are two illegal vacation rentals that are not displayed on the map. Those rentals do not have a TRL, do not pay TOT, and have lock boxes. One of these houses applied for a TRL in 2018. Their neighbors signed a petition and fought against it and won. They did not get the permit due to what the planning commissioners considered oversaturation. Lower Descanso illustrates why an overall cap alone and only considering vacation rentals on your property line as oversaturation won't suffice. We need oversaturation that considers neighboring vacation rentals, not just those on our property lines. There is no reason why there can't be a cap on all three of the following. They are not mutually exclusive. All three can be put into place. Number one, a cap on neighborhood oversaturation. This cap should take into consideration how many vacation rentals are within a radius of other vacation rentals. And as she pointed this out to me, Lower Descanso and Lower Clarissa are the prime real estate. And if you look up the street, there are no vacation rentals. A cap on the total number of transient rentals in Avalon. We live in a town where everyone is on top of each other, especially in the summer. You cannot compare us to other cities. Three, a cap on the total number of future transient rentals one owner can have going forward. You most likely will not be able to change the owners who already have multiple transient rental units, but you could cap it for future applicants so that one person doesn't have six rentals. A Realtor, a construction company, a property manager, or anyone else who has a vested interest in the property should not be allowed to represent the owner at a planning commission meeting. The actual owner of these rentals should be required to personally come before the planning commission when applying for a TRL. When putting together the final ordinance, you need to give the planning commissioners clear and concise rules to enable them to deny a future TRL due to neighboring oversaturation. The primary focus is always on the city and the businesses. Vacation rentals have such a huge impact on our, on our community quality of life. And Debbie's final question is, when do the people residing within the community matter? On behalf of Debbie, thank you.
And thank you. And Debbie, if you're listening, we wish Chuck all the best. Any other comments?
Good evening. Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about agenda item five.
Let me interrupt for, for just a second. No, I can hear you fine. The, the information that we got from Debbie Wright, is that more in line with item six?
That is on, really on item six. So, we'll just take that and make certain that we, you can consider it in this ordinance, but we'll really take those words into account on item six.
Item six, more.
Okay, so, I'm on item five and I'm glad that six is separate so I'll have time to speak again. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
All right, so, as far as non-legal STRs, it says there will have a violation of code each day. What are the consequences? I do not see that listed in the ordinance. And please explain, who is a person who holds an active license or permit by a government agency? What does that mean? Is that code? Is that sheriff? Who would that be? If this person indicates that a unit is being used as a non-legal STR, what evidence is needed and what are the consequences? I find that line to be very unclear as to how you're having consequences and who can actually report the illegal STR, which seems to be an ongoing problem. All right. About the three strikes, we're talking baseball now. Three strikes and you're out. I believe it should read that three strikes shall revoke a permit, not may. No wishy-washy. Three strikes, you're out. The consequences have to defer the crime. This is basic human psychology. If it's may, then they might say, oh, well, they didn't really mean to, blah, 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 and they still aren't revoked. So, I ask you to make that a may recommend to be a shall. And finally, the meet and greet. I love that. You want to have a meet and greet. How are you going to enforce that with lock boxes? Please, consider banning lock boxes on vacation rentals. Therefore, you won't have to have people running around watching what's going on. Are they getting in through the lock box? Did they meet and greet? No, they didn't meet and greet. They get off the boat, they have the code, they go with their taxi, and they check in. So, please consider how you might enforce that meet and greet with banning lock boxes. And that's all for item five. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Is there anything like that that you want to respond to?
I would say that the penalty provisions are in the general penalty provisions of the ordinance. It's Chapter 1.2. It's $100 for first violation, 200 for the second, 500 for the third, et cetera.
And third, and then they're done? Right? One, two, three, and done?
Well, that, the ordinance then says that after three, we can revoke it. And again, every revocation has to go, it's not an automatic, you have to have a hearing that, before the planning commission to revoke any entitlement. There are no such things in California as an automatic revocation. There has to be due process involved for someone.
Oops. Due process, that just kills me in this country. But, sorry.
Hi, Kate Rudden. The city of Avalon staff has made significant effort in evaluating the issues regarding transient rentals and the effectiveness of our current ordinance. And now, in response to voice concerns of our residents, our council has been given the opportunity to build a more robust and effective transient rental ordinance. After all the due diligence and hard work by, done by city staff and residents of this community to evaluate transient rental issues, it seems the proposed modifications to the ordinance are minimal. What I mean by that, there's seven changes. Lori's prepared a very in-depth, point-by-point comment on what should be considered. The other issue is, if we do have 20 upcoming TRL reviews, there's currently no process in place for our planning commission with the updated guidelines to be able to follow. So, you're going to be back to the community thinking it's a rubber stamp. You have 20 upcoming. We've promised the planning commission that they will have better guidelines, more details, more opportunity to either approve or deny. In doing so, you're going against what the residents of this community have requested. We spend a lot of time going back and looking over what CUPs we have, what TRLs we have, et cetera. But that amount of time should also have been spent on this ordinance. Monitoring needs to be in place 24/7, so I think it's great that host compliance is doing this. But where's the contract? We don't have it. It's July. The ordinance didn't need to be in place to put the contract in place. We are a unique community in that we have cruise ships, we have day trippers, and we have vacation rentals. So, when you look at caps, you can't just look at a percentage. You have to look at our community and the condensed community that we have. So, 17% in Palm Springs is not an issue. 19, 20% in the city of Avalon is, were two square miles. So, these things need to be considered. I agree with Leslie, the owner needs to present their own case, period. There's a note in there about council. Well, what is council? Is that the Realtor? Is that the property management company? No, it has to be the owner. During the revocation process, they had a Realtor representing. Where were they? If it's that important to them, why didn't they take the time to show up and present their case? Regarding, again, meet and greets, that was something that we had actually moved forward to counsel. How are you going to enforce it? Again, it comes down to what Dave is saying, enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. Other cities around the United States and around the world have banned lock boxes for this very reason. The only way to enforce meet and greets is to get rid of the lock boxes. We do need to consider We do need to consider a cap down the line, so I don't think that not putting it on the agenda in a year, we have to put it on the agenda in a year. We have to keep the fires on going as far as looking at our community and what the impacts have been. And yes, the TRL process has only been in a short period of time. However, when somebody has a CUP, Realtors, per Jordan Lake, are putting a $250,000 value on that and tacking it on the price of the home. There's not one assessor that comes over from the mainland to look at properties and considers a CUP as part of the value of a home. They look at comps and they look at the home. So this arbitrary inflation happening over and over and over again needs to stop because people need to be able to afford to buy here and live here. And Jordan has said it himself, there's a value to it. Well, we need to take that value back. Yes, you can have a TRL, but you need to follow these rules, and if you don't, we're going to revoke your permit. So I appreciate all the effort that's taken place, but this ordinance is not ready. And I really need you to go back and look at those comments. There were other people that wanted to be here tonight, but they, they're on vacation or out of town. They're minor changes, but they're impactful changes. And we have to give the commission really meaty ordinance to work with. We have to give property owners a meaty ordinance to understand so they don't come before you and say, I didn't know. So we have an opportunity, you have an opportunity, and we're at the one-yard line. Go to a football reference. We need to get to the goal, and we still got work to do. Thank you.
Anything else? Do, can we then address? Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Hi. Bobby Hire, 415 Alta Vista. I just wanted to come up and say thank you to all you guys for all your hard work. I know it's been a long process. You guys have been going through this on two years now, and there's a lot of effort that's gone into it and trying to get this right. And it's been a long process, so I just wanted to say thank you guys for putting in the effort and doing what you need to do to get this right. And I know there's people on both sides of the opinion, but we've been on the waiting list for two years now, and anything we can do to keep this moving forward would be very much appreciated. So, thank you.
So you're the owner, correct?
I am the owner, yes.
So I have a question. When they talk about no lock boxes, so, and if you're on the mainland, I imagine you're going to go with, if you get permitted, you're going to go with CIVR or somebody, right?
Correct.
And then, do you have an opinion about these lock boxes?
I mean, I don't, I don't see an issue that, you know, you need locks, boxes, or don't. I don't have a issue with not having them. You know, I prefer as an owner to have the people who are going to manage, which is going to be somebody here local, to meet the people and make sure that the people who are renting our house are going to treat it nicely and treat the community nicely. And I think that's important, so.
And Alta Vista, is that out at Hamilton Cove?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay. It sounds like a new street to me.
Yes, it's in Hamilton Cove.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, excuse me. I just want to, if I could just comment on a couple things on that. First of all, the issue with the lock boxes in and of itself, you know, we looked at that. There's many more things than lock boxes. There's automatic door locks, there's electronic door locks, there's remote-controlled door locks that can be released, and you're not going to see a lock box sitting out there. We, we looked at this, and we felt that the more important issue is that the individuals that are renting the property are meeting in person with the onsite property manager. And part of that is the form that we've addressed in here, that they have to acknowledge the sound, the noise ordinance, the times of pickup for trash, when they can, where they can park, what side of the street they can park, and all these things. And that form has a sign-off, an initial, that has to be acknowledged by both the property manager and the individuals that are renting the property. So, yes, I guess theoretically, could somebody forge that? But we've put that in place in order to have that document that we have somebody identifying, I met with them, we went through this, here's their initials on each item, we both signed at the bottom. If we get, you know, want to challenge them, we can ask for that form to see if it was done. I mean, that, that was more important from our standpoint than simply saying no lock boxes. Because if they weren't meeting with the people, if they weren't seeing whether there's six going in there or 16 going in there, that was more important, and that's why we had that language in. I just wanted to address that lock box issue. The second part is that, you know, the basis for approval or denial of TRLs by the planning commission is set forth in Section 3-1310. And I, I just think it's a little unfair to say the planning commission has no direction and has no tools. They do. You know, that sets forth that the planning commission shall find certain things and find, you know, they can review the outdoor entertainment area, they have to determine that it's not detrimental to neighboring property or the neighborhood. They should look at the public health, safety, general welfare, make sure it's not detrimental to the property or the vicinity or the neighborhood for such a use, that the site proposed is adequate for its surrounding nature. I mean, they have this criteria. It's in the ordinance right now. We've, they're to look at the buffer areas, the fences in the walls, the parking facilities, landscaping, the grounds, the screening. All of these things are in there. And, you know, planning commission, I'm not saying they go through each one of those bullet-pointed items as it happens, but the discussion does take place. Now, I think, you know, we have to be more conscientious to what we're looking at, and maybe we can create a form for planning commission as they go through to make sure they're checking these things off. But, you know, they, they do have criteria. They're not just handed something and rubber stamping. I just think it's unfair that that's the connotation, that it's a rubber stamp by planning commission. I think it's just, it's simply not.
The other issue is on the, one of the things that the new ordinance requires is that it requires an annual review of the cap. So it's not just a recommendation. Every year, the cap is going to come before the city council, not the planning commission. Every year, the city council will have a hearing on whether or not the cap and what the cap should be. That's, we put that in the ordinance, and it's a requirement that the council makes that decision, not planning commission.
Well, that's kind of funny, because in Item 6, it says we recommend not establishing a cap.
No, no, no. It says, no, no, it says just that you, every year you come and you consider that. Every year, you're going to, you're going to, council's going to consider.
I'll wait until 6. I'll wait until Item 6. Well, and the comment that was made about the council or whoever, whatever that word, I think owner is, is probably good.
Absolutely.
Is good. The owner should come up. If there's revocation or anything going on, it shouldn't be.
I think on the application, the owner should absolutely be here when their property is being reviewed by planning commission.
But it doesn't say owner specifically. It said council or somebody.
And also, anywhere else in, in this new thing, at any time there's any kind of problem or hearing or whatever, the owner should be here, should not be allowed to be represented by someone.
I don't think it can be blanket, because you're going to have people who have mobility issues or ill, or they can't be here. So they would have to have representation here for them. So it just can't be a blanket that the owner has to be here.
Can you do a Zoom in that case?
You can always do a Zoom. But you also, you also cannot, I mean, an owner can always have an attorney attend.
With them?
Yeah.
No, with them.
With them or solo?
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay, but we'd still like to see the owner.
Yeah, I think, I think if they're going to invest time and money and energy into our community, then they should be able to show up for whatever meeting their unit is having an issue with, be it their application, or a problem, or whatever.
And for the transient occupancy thing, one of the changes that we made, and I'll just, we can, I can work on that language. The whole purpose of the transient occupancy change that we did five years ago is to require that that person come before planning commission. Because before, when it's a CUP, it just travels on a sale, and we don't know who that is. So the whole purpose of the transient license was to make certain that it goes to, that we understand who has it. So I, we can, we can do that tonight, can change the language tonight to make certain that it's the owner, and we can go ahead and adopt it.
Okay, well, I'm not ready to adopt it yet, so don't rush me.
For the owner part, you're good. Yes. For the owner part, you're good, though.
Yeah, for the owner part, I'm good. Thank you.
I was going to ask on the planning side of things, and this might be a question for Kelly and for city staff, is just, I know that planning commission already has the information to be able to make a revocation. Perhaps it can be laid out in the staff report, similar to how CEQA or other governmental entities lay it out, where it's literally a checkbox-formatted list, and city staff discusses each point individually. So that way, planning commissioners have the info at, easily in one page. It's something simple for them to preview and for the community to also review in case there are questions or issues with that. Is that appropriate?
No, I think that makes a lot of sense. I mean, the community council, the planning commission are going through the effort to really refine the regulations that we have right now. And I think that moving forward with the processing of any new applications, it would make a lot of sense to reformat the staff report that we've been previously using to break it down in a way that not just planning commission understands, but community members can also go through it point-by-point to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of where that application stacks up against the regulations and be able to fully understand what staff's recommendation is.
Great.
Cool. And would it also be possible, because a lot of people are visual, you know, I've seen the staff reports, and they're very wordy and convoluted and therefore and heretofore and all that kind of fun stuff. Would it be possible to include a map of the existing transient rentals that are around the applicant's place so that the planning commissioners can see?
You already do, right? That's already part, it had been, I don't know if it still is.
We've always had one before, but I think now that the city is working with contract services with the county utilizing LARIAC, we have a lot more of ability to put together a much more visually appealing map than we have previously done. So I think we've got more capabilities to provide that analysis visually now than we did in the past.
And I just have a minor question. Some of the people are renting golf carts with their units, and they're not supposed to, I don't know where it says, because that would be a violation if they were renting their vehicle with their unit, but how do, I don't see where it says anything about thou shall not. I mean, it seems to be the rule that only if they're on the side of the hill, but is that written somewhere?
We do have that somewhere, and it might be in the vehicle code.
Yeah, so there are restrictions.
It's addressed, I know, I know.
And it is also in the conditions of approval. So not only do you have the ordinance, but whenever someone gets transient license, they're given, the planning commission approves, makes the findings under the ordinance, but then attaches conditions of approval. And I think that's in those conditions. And a violation of those conditions of approval subjects that to revocation.
Okay, as long as that, if we're making a nice little list of theirs, unless they have been given approval, they shall not rent your golf cart.
Could you speak into the mic? I'm getting messages that they can't.
I'm, I'm sorry. The, the conditions of the vehicle are in the conditions of approval, so not only does the planning commission make findings under the ordinance, but there are attached, I think it's about 35, it's over 30 individual conditions that they have to comply with once they're granted the license, and a violation of those allows us to revoke it. And I think now that we've got an appetite for revocations, that we'll be more active in doing it.
Because I know properties that they're on the flats, they don't, there shouldn't be a golf cart with them, and all of a sudden I'll see people with a golf cart, so.
Oh, yeah, well, I showed city manager a picture of one parked on Sumner with the vacation rental thing, you know? It's like, no, that should not happen. So does it have to be separate in conditions of approval? I think it has more teeth if it's in the actual municipal code.
I mean, I know, I believe that there's language that, that Hamilton Cove, for example, can have them.
Right.
So, Hamilton Cove does have.
Understood. But outside, can we put it in there saying outside of Hamilton Cove, not allowed?
Yeah.
You know?
Wherever it's not supposed to be, it just needs to be along with everything else in plain, right.
Okay.
Okay, what else?
Also, I had a question where the commission shall deny the requested transient rental license where the findings indicate, and the commission determines that the applicant has failed to show that the requested transient rental use will not jeopardize, adversely affect, endanger, or otherwise constitute a menace to the public health, safety, or general welfare, or be materially determinal, detrimental to the property of, detrimental to the property of other persons located in the vicinity of such use and reasonable restrictions and/or conditions to license the establishment of the proposed use will not prevent, determine. What are they supposed to supply to, how do, how do they fail? I mean, what are they supposed to show? Is there some sort of paperwork? Is there something that the planning commission looks at and says, oh, no, wait a minute? Because nobody's going to show up to the planning commission and go, yeah, we want a party house.
No, but you can look at and see, you have a patio, you have an outdoor patio with no screening that's directly adjacent, 18 inches away from your neighbor's property, and you've created this outdoor patio environment. I mean, they can look at those things. The very next paragraph after the one you, you read says, "In making such determination, the planning commission shall find," boom, 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 boom. So they, they should look at, and that's why I said, the nature, condition, development of adjacent uses, buildings, you know, are you located next to a commercial building versus a residential? You know, the, because, and Debbie Wright's exactly right, correct. The nature of our neighborhoods, it's just not, look to your right, look to your left. You better look up, you better look down, you better look behind you. I mean, you're surrounded by other potential residential uses.
Okay, the wording on that just, I was like, bleh.
And I would say, given my experience in over 15 years, though, one thing is common with those applications, whether it's a CUP or transient rental that are denied, is that the neighbors come to the hearing and express their disapproval. And when that happens, the planning commission, I'd say maybe 50/50, will, will, will deny it. When no one shows up, there's not that evidence that, that the neighbors are upset. So my experience has been, when people show up, they are, they are at least, maybe half of them are denied.
But we do have some areas in town where it's so saturated, there are no neighbors to come.
Right.
And, yeah.
And I want to save Kate a trip to the podium, because Kate shows up to every planning commission meeting regarding Hamilton Cove and does speak out against them, so I don't, I know she would want to say, but I do come there and I do complain, and they are still , so.
Right.
I acknowledge, you know, that, that Kate does do that.
So I just wanted to kind of circle back real quick to the question from council related to the vehicle restrictions. So it is actually current, current in the regulations for transient rentals. It's AMC 3-1317E1, and this is in the regulations as they stand now. It says transient rental property is in the flats, and we do have a definition for that. And Bahia Vista are not allowed to provide vehicles for transient rental guests.
But, but who's going to read them that AMC code? I mean, it should be included in, put the AMC code in the paperwork.
That's, oh, you mean on the, for the forms, or what do you, where you want it?
On the forms, on what? Just to make sure that that's, because that would be a reason to.
Yeah, but it's in the code, right.
It's here.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know it is in there as something that has to, is a requirement, and if someone was in violation of that, that would be a strike violation.
Yeah, it's on, it's the second to the last, or third to the last, fourth to the last, excuse me. It's the back page of this gap page here that has the.
Thanks.
317.
Section E vehicles, it's on the bottom of the page.
Okay.
What page?
It's this page with the.
So it's like four, four back.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, perfect. Perfect, perfect. Okay.
Uh, there, I think.
One three one seven.
Yeah.
I know, it was, it was on where I thought it went.
It was, it printed a little.
Vehicle's right there.
Oh. Oh, so, okay, God.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Are we at a point to introduce and waive all further readings of this ordinance?
I have a couple more questions.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, councilwoman.
Dave, can you remind me, what's our response timeline for complaints?
Well, our response time for complaints in this is thirty minutes.
And then for our language on complaints when we're considering renewals, what do we have right now? Could you read that out, please?
I don't, I'll, I'll have to track it down on this, but yeah, I mean, in the goal.
I just wanna suggest, like, I guess I wanna know, what is the Planning Commission looking at, what are the requirements?
The renewals don't come to Planning Commission. The renewals, the renewals of a business license just go through finance.
No, like, for example, when we said, I know, like, they mentioned three strikes, but they're not gonna automatically get it taken away, they have to have their due process. So what are we looking at? What are the requirements that?
Oh, for revocation?
Yes.
Okay. So, so this is something, you know, in the last two years, we have done two batches of revocations. One is the most recent, the ninety-five. Prior to that was really, I think seventeen to twenty, really low level, that just didn't do anything. We haven't started the revocation, we haven't done any revocations that I'm aware of, on ones that violated the noise ordinance, or violated the littering, or violated, because we had a difficult time of monitoring, documenting those. Now, it will be our intention on an annual basis, that when they hit that mark, three strikes, we'll have the documentation, we'll have the evidence from host compliance, we'll be able to file with the Planning Commission a revocation, go through the due process, send out the notice, the applicant will come in, we'll say, on these dates, this is what happened, we called the host, the property manager, they didn't pick up on this date, they failed to respond, whatever it might be.
Right now, could we decide what the requirements could be? Like, for example, I wanna suggest the documentation of the neighbors, property managers, law enforcement, could that all be part of it?
The problem we ran into before is we were a pitting neighbor against, we were bringing in the neighbor to say, to testify, or we were, the sheriff might drive by, if there's not a document or a report, we didn't have any verification as it comes up, days, weeks, months later. That's why we're doing this, in order to have that documentation from somebody, so we're not bringing in a neighbor to testify against their neighbor. We have host compliance that will provide the documentation.
I just feel like that would be more helpful, when we're reconsidering something like that.
Well, it doesn't stop us from using that, but it, it gives us, I think, a better tool to use against, you know, to manage enforcement on these.
I guess the biggest question I have is just in terms of that, I understand that we need to provide due process, which I appreciate and value ridiculously a lot right now, but I'm not sure, in terms of for the Planning Commission to understand what their options are, if three strikes is three strikes, as some of the public have suggested this evening, and as we're trying to get to that point here, I'm not sure what the allowance would be of any, does the, does due process have to include a last and final warning? Is due process an immediate decision? You have a chance to, to share your case, and we can say, thanks, you shared your case, good job, you didn't do what you were supposed to do.
We can revoke for any violation of, of any term of a transient occupancy license, any term. The due process is, is that you have to give notice as to why, and there has to be a hearing for that revocation. But we don't need to wait until there's three strikes. If it's, if it's a violation of the terms of condition, we can initiate a revocation proceedings.
So if, so I remember there was somebody that would, was afraid to go to the place and tell them to shut up. And so, if they call law enforcement, because they feel they need backup, will law enforcement then put together some kind of report, so we have that as well? Are they included, they're definitely included in this? Or, or if they go, well, I'm sorry, you're a little noisy, calm down, and then they drive away? Should they not be responsible for making some kind of a note of that visit?
Well, law enforcement's still obviously involved in this. The difference with it is that law enforcement's goal is to solve the problem. And if the problem is a loud party, and they solve the problem, turn the music down, stop it, go inside, and they do that, from law enforcement's standpoint, they solve that problem, and they'll move on. That won't necessarily generate a report in and of itself. And this is the problem we are running into, is that, you know, when we get the calls and to backtrack and to verify the information, and a lot of times the complaints come in anonymously, is to be able to verify that, and that's what we're trying to eliminate, is having to do all that. We will have that readily available every Monday if we want it, every, every day we could get these stats.
I think the process for neighbors and residents is to utilize the twenty-four-seven monitoring system, to report it that way. Does that system then connect with both the housing manager, which it's supposed to?
Yep.
Does it also, it's up to the housing manager at that point, if they need to have law enforcement involved, they also can reach out to law enforcement at that point?
If it, if it absolutely rises at that level, sure. I mean, we're not discouraging calling law enforcement when it rises to that level. We're trying to avoid confrontations and putting neighbors into a position.
Exactly, exactly.
For sure.
So, so is host compliance gonna capture all that data when, when this is finally in place?
Yep, absolutely.
So, okay, so we could, we could have a report spit out for three seventeen Clarissa.
Or a certain street, or a certain, you know, overall citywide, how many complaints came through a certain property, yeah, absolutely.
Well, that should be in place yesterday.
That's why it's good, though.
It's a good thing, yes.
It would be nice, but yeah.
Yoli say, I just wanna clarify the process. We do have, they have to, conditions, we have the conditions that, that we have to, they have to follow, in order to be in compliance with the application and the permit. What problems we were finding when people were coming up and, and complaining about the noise and everything, is the formal complaints. People weren't filing a formal complaint with the city. So when they come up here and they do have issues which are valid, and we hear them, but if it's not done formally, we really can't do anything. And we were having, it has to be done, a written formal complaint to the city. And there was one, but, that they can come up and formally complain. Now that the website is up, and we have a new website, it's so much easier for people to be able to go on and file a formal complaint. And then, when that's done, then the city follows up and does their investigation. And we, I, I believe that, how I understand it, is that we can, we, they come in, they have a hearing, and we can, we can revoke their permit with, at any given time, if they're in violation. So, the, the issue, I believe, is not adding more conditions to the municipal code. I think we've cleaned it up. I think there's still, of course, more work to be done, but we don't have any enforcement. And that's the whole thing, is if we're not enforcing, it's garbage. So, I think we're on the right track of trying to get a better grip on the enforcement. But, and I say all the time, file a complaint, file a complaint formally, and that, that does start the process.
They came to a Planning Commission meeting, and they hadn't filed a formal complaint, the Planning Commission can't hear it?
A lot of people haven't, a lot of people have, a formal complaint is a formal complaint.
I'm sorry?
You have to file a formal complaint, for the process, for the due process, there has to be an investigation. It's hearsay, oh, I heard my neighbor, or saw my neighbor doing this, that's here, you know? There has to be some sort of formal complaint that is.
A paper trail.
Yeah, a paper trail. You know, because even though somebody's complaining, the other person has the right to defend themselves, and come up and say, well, that's not true, or, you know? But a formal complaint is where it starts, and we do have the process to revoke permits. It's not like we're not, you know?
Right.
Able to. I mean, they have to comply. And with the golf cart, and the carts, no, on the flats at all. And I believe, when the condition is for a vehicle, when they're in Hamilton Cove or on the terraces, they have to have parking, correct?
Off street.
They have to prove that they have, they have off-street parking, and if they don't have parking, they don't get approved, even if they're on the hill. So, and, everybody says it's saturated in, in the flats, it is, that's, it's, it's saturated. But every time someone goes for a permit up on the terraces, lower terrace, middle terrace, upper terrace, for some reason, they think they're exempt from having vacation rentals up there, even though there is nowhere in the municipal code saying that lower terrace, middle terrace, and upper terrace, or any of the hillside homes, are exempt from having a CUP or a TRL. So, I mean, that, I think, is why there's not a lot on the terrace, because they really come in and fight. But, yeah.
I think we need to make an effort, or more of an effort, to educate the public on how to do a formal complaint, on our end.
I think once this monitoring is in place, part of what we would need to do is actually have both an online, physical mailing, and a newspaper ad campaign, that walks people through how to do it. Whether it's a how-to video, it's a postcard, in both English and Spanish, in their P O box for everyone, it is emails for those that are on the city email list. It's not just one thing, it happens over time, and maybe it's even a reminder at the start of every summer, hey, we know vacation rental season is coming up, here's what you can do.
You're gonna have a full list on the city website of every property address, the property manager, the contact, and then the host compliance contact information. I mean, in the past, the city has, you know, the, the policy of having the window placard on there. What we were hearing oftentimes is people weren't comfortable going up to a house, you might have to walk past the group you're gonna complain about to look at the, to get the information. We're gonna have it online.
It's small.
It's small. And at night, when these things normally happen, it's not a comfortable situation. So it's gonna be online, and host compliance will have it at their fingertips when they get the call.
And, and I just wanna say something about, you know, documentation. When people come to me with concerns of things going on, or things they've seen, I ask them, send me an email, write it up. I cannot do anything unless you write up what happened. I need to have documentation. So this is the same thing, if, if you have concerns, it needs to be documented, so that at least we have, like Mary said, the paper trail, so.
So when it comes to like a party call, or a disturbance call that we roll to, typically, the caller almost, almost never wants to be, you know, wants their name out there. They're usually anonymous, and also, they don't have an address typically. What they'll tell you is that it's, you know, around this area, or something like that. And we do respond basically just on the number block. We have no one to call, because they don't wanna leave a name, and it's understandable, because like, you know, Dave was saying, you don't really wanna tell your neighbors. So when it comes to being able to produce a report on locations that we're responded to, or we dealt with, it's very difficult, because the addresses just aren't listed. So the deputies will respond to the area, they'll hear music, they'll do a door knock, and, and usually, almost nine times out of ten, that's, that's the end of it. Once in a while, we may have to do a second return, but it's pretty rare. And our goal ultimately is, is not to go out there and, you know, write tickets and all that kind of thing. Typically, what we're doing is trying to quiet down, so people can sleep. So it's just a, it's a difficult process, there's not much documentation for our end right now.
But it seems like if you say some of them, you have to go through twice, because maybe, okay, no noise after ten. So now it's eleven, and you show up, because somebody calls, and then you did knock on the door, and now it's one o'clock, that somehow should be documented. Somehow should be documented.
No, it is, and, and basically, we'll write down, the problem we have is that our system, it's a, it's a CAD system, you know, a computer automated dispatch, and what it does is, is we put in a location, and then we clear the call, but the problem is, when you search for your locations that you went to, it comes up with the number block of that area, it doesn't come with the actual location. Deputy might put that in their clearance, they'll write out they contacted, you know, John Smith, you know, mailed his birthday, and that's about it. So it's hard to really document it well and get it back as a report, it's just, it doesn't work that well. I'd recommend if, if we're looking for actual addresses, or violators, consistent violators, is that people that call, make the community understand that they actually need to kind of get an address, and either give that to us, or, it's quite easy nowadays to simply take your cellphone out and, and, and take a picture, and then the deputies out there, if, if it becomes a regular habit, I'd recommend that all day long, because that video evidence goes a long way. It, it does for, you know, both civil and criminal, you know, prosecution.
Even if it's not a report, could we just take note of the amount of calls that we get to this certain rental?
It's, we just don't record those kind of things, to be honest with you, it doesn't happen that way, because it, it's, like I said, typically, there's no address given. And it's, we're, we're basically listening for the location, and, and we don't always find it, to be honest with you, sometimes they quiet down, because they know their car's rolling down the street, and they know they shouldn't be doing it. But typically, no, our addresses are not recorded that well. You know, that may change, we do, we do have some geo-tagging right now with, with our bodyguard cameras, doesn't know where we are, and you can kind of look at a location and, and dig through it a little bit and find some information, but it's, it's very time-consuming and, and difficult. And, and the problem when it comes to short-term rentals is that you have, you know, maybe you have a landlord that's not abiding by the rules, but they're not also bringing in the same people every week, so they're not, you know, a constant problem at that one location. So it may happen one week, and then it may happen again six weeks later, or two months later. So it's really not a consistent issue on, on locations. I can't tell you that there's one address in particular, right now, that it's a regular issue for me. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, oh, go ahead.
Just very quickly, I, I think the host system is gonna be awesome once it's in place. Is that also the platform where you report illegal short-term rentals? Because I really don't see illegal short-term rentals addressed very clearly in this, other than the active license or permit by a government agency.
Well, if you're an illegal short-term rental, either you, you don't have a CUP or grandfather, or a TRL, a license to do it, you're not paying your T O T, you're not, we're addressing those. I mean, when those complaints come into the city, we're investigating those and addressing those. Host compliance can identify homes or properties that are advertising on any of the platforms, and if they don't show up on our list as having a valid business license, yes, we address those immediately. And that, when that happens, and we get those lists, and, and they can tell us, say, this property's out there advertising, that we don't have any indication, we immediately are addressing those.
And the difference in those versus transient occupancy licenses, or CUPs, is they have no property right to do that, and so they are not entitled to the formal due process under a revocation. We can immediately go to enforcement of the municipal code, which is fines and penalties, right away.
So if a property is listing on Airbnb as a thirty-day rental, and then choosing to rent it for two weeks only, by private arrangement with the owner, are we able to report that to host?
We're aware of that one, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I shared it as well.
I think the hard part is that it's not something that's necessarily publicly shared when we have those enforcements, the public doesn't necessarily know. So, that's the hard part, I think, is it is happening, it's just not something that's reported out at a meeting for people to be aware of. Maybe that's something we should look at, I don't know if that's beneficial or not to do, but we are, they are capturing people with this process, and with other processes they've had in place for quite a while, but it's just not something that's part of a report, or part of an agenda.
And I'm not saying none of them slip through the cracks, but I think it's much harder with A I, and with host compliance, and what they're doing with these, they're, they're capturing those. I mean, people are not leaving reviews for properties unless they've actually stayed there, and it's renting. It's very hard for somebody to say, I'm not renting, when we have access to reviews and data, so.
I'm sorry, quick question. So, because we don't have host up yet, and I think two years ago, we petitioned to get the complaint form online, because originally, it was behind Donna's back, and the city, people didn't know it was even there to fill out, blah, blah, blah. So it was great the day.
harder with A I., and with host compliance, and what they're doing with these. They're capturing those. I mean, people are not leaving reviews for properties unless they've actually stayed there, and it's renting. It's very hard for somebody to say, I'm not renting, when we have access to reviews and data, so.
I'm sorry, quick question. So, because we don't have host up yet, and I think two years ago, we petitioned to get the complaint form online, because originally, it was behind Donna's back, and the city, people didn't know it was even there to fill out, blah, blah, blah. So, it was great that Dave took the effort to put it online. Until host compliance is in place, which we don't know when it may befall, that's great. We had two incidents in Hamilton Cove. One was an assault arrest, the sheriffs came out and made it arrest. I sent in information to the city to let them know the address, what happened. I never heard back from the city, didn't get an acknowledgement. I don't even know if that sheriff's report went to the planning commission, or somewhere in a desk, if this vacation rental comes up again. The second issue is an unpermitted driver drove a golf cart off our boat ramp into the ocean. Again, we sent in information. The issue is, people are still on the property. They're on the property for three, four, or five days. They've damaged the ocean, they've damaged Hamilton Cove, and then they're threatening to sue, because we didn't have a chain up to prevent the girl from driving, an unpermitted girl driving a golf cart in the ocean. These are real things that happen. So, understand the residents' frustration when we do fill out forms, when we do follow the process, we do come forward, complaints are made, but where do they go? There's no touchback to say, we followed up. Oftentimes, a report will go in, a call is made to the property management company, did you address this? Yes. Well, meanwhile, the party's still going on until 3:00 A.M. So, understand the 30,000-foot thing, and the reality. So, we're getting the reality closer to what needs to happen. I love Lisa's comment about how to file a complaint, because that's one of the things we said. You have to tell the community that the complaint's on the website, because if they don't know, you can't blame the community members showing up to a meeting to make a complaint, when they didn't know that they could have filed it in the first place. So, that's just some comments. Thank you.
But I also agree that they're definitely, it's 2025, and we have a full-time I T. guy. There should be something built into the website, as soon as you file a complaint, you should get an email, or a text, or however you signed up your complaint, saying, your complaint has been received, we will let you know when it's been resolved. They're never, I mean, not just vacation rentals, any kind of complaint that you do on the city website, you get zero feedback. And that, to me, is leading to people not wanting to make the complaint, not use the system. So, I think we can get a little better on that, our I T. guy.
Oh, Debbie Wright, you've had a long day. Okay.
I just got back. I turned on the TV, and I know what you're talking about, and I felt, I felt like I needed to come down. And my timing is perfect, because it's about what you're talking about now. We, who live in that saturated area that you looked at at the map that I gave you, we have always done our due diligence. When the, the system was that you filled out the form in handwriting, and you brought it in, and you dropped it off at the front desk, that was the system. And when I came to a planning commission meeting, I was told by Amanda, Debbie, we never got any of your complaints. And I said, well, how can that be? Because I turned in 12. And I'm not the only one, my neighbors also turned in the papers. So, clearly, you have two problems going on here, besides just the complaint forms themselves, what's happening to those complaint forms once we drop them off. And I told them, at that time, they need to change the system. And from that came, not the current system, but the one before that, where you could go online, and you could do it. I would just like to say, since 2018, I have filled out a minimum of eight a year, sometimes as many as 24. I have copies of every single complaint I've ever turned in, for every single year I've turned them in. The problem that I have is, as in so many areas in life, there are no consequences to one's actions. And when it comes to this, and we live behind that white house, they are literally two feet from our bedroom, that big party house. The website says that it sleeps six, and only families are allowed. But over, and over, and over again, she will put 16, 25-year-olds in there. So, when we take the time, and I understand not everybody does it, when myself and our neighbors take the time to do what we're supposed to do, and there are no consequences, well, there's a reason why there's no consequences, because nobody ever does anything about it. You know? And so, it's, it's a, it's a real problem, and I don't know how you're going to fix it. And I, I got home just in time, and you were talking about the three strikes, and what you're going to do about it. It's pretty simple to me, and to so many other people who are here, three strikes, and you are out. Sure, you can get up, and you can try to justify what your three strikes are all about, but there has to be consequences, and you have to stick to those consequences. Because otherwise, what does this community do? At some point, this community has to matter. At some point, people who have to get up at work, for work at 6:00 in the morning, shouldn't be, have to wear earplugs to work. They shouldn't have to not be able to get sleep till 4:00 in the morning. We call the sheriff's all the time. I log it every time I call him. I don't know what happens with their logs. I can only speak for myself, and what my experiences have been, and how I follow through. But you have to decide what, what, it's either we're going to enforce it, or we're not. It's pretty black and white, there is no gray area there. That's it.
So, when we were talking about that, where in this new one, it says, after three strikes, they may revoke it, can we please change that to shall? And so, the fine is $1,000, $2,000, and then $500 for the third one? So, on their third strike, can we, can we put in there $500 plus revocation hearing, automatically? And you are suspended from renting until this is resolved?
That, that, the 500 that I cited is the general penalty that applies to any violation of the municipal code. So, now I'm looking, you tell me where it says may, after three strikes, and I'll...
I can show you.
Okay.
And I think that that goes to what Scott was talking about, is from the due process standpoint. When you say shall revoke, then it does not seem like we're granting due process, we're simply taking that action. If you want to say shall start the revocation process, we can certainly commit to that, because that would be our goal.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, upon the third citation for a violation, it is 3-1 dot 305. Upon the third citation for a violation of any provision of this article, the planning department may recommend to the planning commission that the transient rental license be considered for revocation.
Okay, we're changing that to shall.
We can make, we can make the revocation process a shall, but it still has to be up to the planning commission.
Okay. Okay, and so, if that was just, what is our fee structure for strikes concerning transient rental licenses? Do we have one? Or is it just the general fee structure of any violation of the municipal code?
It's the general municipal code violation.
Do we want to have a separate one for TRLs? I mean, because we're discussing this right now, we have the power to put it in this right now, if we want to do that.
Well, we have a number of things that would be violations, currently in here, in that we've added the noise ordinances, the...
No, I know, but what's the monetary penalty? If they violate their first time, how much is that? Second time, third time? Because I think, I think we should make it pretty steep to, I mean, because like Debbie said, it's a slap on the wrist. You know, it's like, if these people are making, you know, thousands of dollars off of these vacation rentals, you know, what's 100 bucks?
So, then, the owners of those TRLs would have to have something in their agreements that, if we get fined, you're responsible to pay that fine. If I'm a noisemaker, that, just like when somebody brought a dog, and they weren't supposed to have a dog, blah, blah.
A lot of them do.
Well, that's up to them.
A lot of them do. A lot of, a lot of those relationships do, that it's on, if you violate, and, for example, if you get a ticket in their golf cart, now, it's your responsibility.
Right, right. Or if we, if we fine them too, that's up to them to do, but, and that's what will probably happen.
So, if we put, if we put a stiff fine structure in here, and the owner of the vacation rental tells their guests, if you, if the cops get called on you, that's going to be $400.
Right, right, yeah.
You know what I mean?
That's up to them, yeah.
Right, but still, it could deter, it could deter, you know, if, if the owner of the place doesn't pass it on to their guests, then they're on the hook for the fine, and then the next time, it's higher, and then the next time, it's higher still, which I definitely think should go to the planning commission for possible revocation, included with that third strike. And I don't know how to word that in here, but I would definitely like to see that structure. I think that's a good way to go, to start getting a handle on these trouble-making houses, or whatever.
What, what structure do you want for the, for the fine?
Uh, well...
500, 1,000, 2,000, 500?
Uh, no, there's a certain limit.
Okay.
By whom? The state?
By the state, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it possible to, in the next reading, bring it back with the fee structure that's possible?
We can do that. Let me just say that, right now, under the municipal code, so there's the fine section of it, which is 100, first violation, 200, second, 500, third violation. There's also a provision in the municipal code that says that any violation of the municipal code is a misdemeanor, subject to a penalty of $1,000. So, that also applies to this, but that would be a, something that our office, serving as city prosecutor, would initiate.
Okay, but...
And so, we could, we could, we, we could, upon recommendation, take this section of the code, that is a penalty, make it specific to transient licenses, look at what the maximum penalty we can charge is, and then you'd have your separate enforcement mechanism under transient licenses.
But if you literally call something a misdemeanor, that sounds more like somebody's got to go to court.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so now, look at what we've created, a real mess. I mean, a lot of work. If we're going to call that stuff misdemeanors, it'd be better if we could just figure out what the maximum fines could be, and leave it at that.
Yeah, I don't know if we have to have that language or not. I mean, that's the current language right now.
It's already in there right now. It's just a matter of...
But that's any violation of any code. So, we can, we can restate that, leave out the misdemeanor part, you know, right? Because, I mean, because that's any violation. We're, we are wanting language that is violation-specific to...
TRLs.
TRLs.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so I can bring that back. Let me just also, since we're talking about bringing it back next month, or...
We'll be right with you.
Next meeting, let me just say the other change that I, that I put in. This is on the license application and hearing. Now, applicant is defined as the owner of the property. And so, the, the request of counsel was to make the owner attend. So, what the revision would be, would be applicants must attend the hearing, and may be accompanied by counsel.
Okay.
Okay? So, I've made that revision. So, when you see this revision, we've incorporated that, plus, in addition to changing the word "may" from "shall."
And is that on 3-1.309A?
Yes.
Okay, so, it also says, the planning commission may require reports from the city's law enforcement agency. I think that they should require, because that goes back to the whole reporting of any wrongdoings before. I mean, if there's any, well, this is their application.
It's their application. So, what we have to, we, yeah.
So...
When they apply, we, we do that process. I mean, we, the, we do the inspection, we go through all that on the initial application. That's what that section...
So, we do, because I did, I did have a question about that. So, we do, every single person that applies, we have someone go out and inspect the home.
Yes.
Okay. And is that, used to be John, it's somebody else?
Enforcement, yes. Our housing inspectors.
All right. Okay.
Hi, Olivia Gazes. You know, after listening to Kate, and reading Lori's letter, and listening to Debbie, I, I just can't see, you have too many loose ends. I'm asking you not to pass what you, what you want to do tonight, take it another month, look it over, talk about it more. It's not ready, not ready to go.
And a lot of things, things that I think you're also addressing is item six.
Sorry?
A lot of the things that you're concerned about, and they're concerned, is also listed in item six, which is next. And that's a lot more about the TRLs and things, I think, so that might help.
Thanks, Annie.
I hope I'm not wrong, but...
Is there any way we can spell out, in the license fee section, exactly what the fee is? Or is that just cumbersome, because you would have to...
I would not do that, because if you put a fee in the ordinance, if you ever change the fee, then you have to amend the ordinance, which is two readings and 30 days later.
Okay.
But what we'll do is, when we determine what the fee is, it'll, it'll be in the fee schedule.
Okay.
And so, this one's not going to be adopted tonight? No. Because we're making changes, so it'll be coming back.
Right.
And do, should we consider making counsel, having the word legal counsel? Or just leave it as counsel, so property managers or a realtor can come?
Well, it says applicant, and then the counsel. So, the applicant...
Does a property manager or realtor fall under counsel, or should we write legal counsel?
Well, they can have whoever they want come with them. We're just requiring that...
They be present.
They have to be here.
They want to be here, yeah.
Okay.
I do want to say thank you for including the email address as part of the communications. In the first section, we were talking about shifting some of the communications to be able to be email, in addition to the other methodologies that are used, mail, phone, and other.
Okay. And on 3-1.313, new license required, no person whose transient rental license has been revoked or suspended shall engage and carry on during the period of suspension, or after revocation, until a new license shall have been granted. I think, if they got, if they got their license revoked, I think they should never get one again. Does anybody agree with me on that? Or can we say that?
We have to look at the legal part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can have a lifetime ban, but if you want, we can look at that, to see if that's permissible.
Okay. Please do.
And it's on the, and it's on the applicant, not on the address.
Right.
Yeah, well, these are only now transient licenses, that's the whole reason.
Right, 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 yeah.
Yeah, and so, if this person is, you know, and they get it revoked, and a couple years later, people forget, you know, nope.
Or maybe there be a time limit, or whatever, when he looks into it, yeah.
Okay.
Well, Mary, Mary just said something. So, my question then, now, is, we, we do this, we make these changes, and it's on the T L Rs, but what about the CUPs? Would this all apply to the CUPs that are currently, the revocation, the issues, that, would that all, would those all fall under changes to the ordinance?
Well, in the enforcement of the ordinance, we, the CUP is entitled to continue that use, that, and under the conditions that it was granted.
I'm talking about the revocation of a CUP. Would it follow under this, if they get three strikes? Would they...
No, we can still, we can still revoke for one strike.
All right, I just want to make sure that, it's just not the, the licenses, it's also the...
Yes, it is, because it's, it's defined in the ordinance as a transient rental, not a transient rental license.
Okay.
So, we've, we've, we broaden the definition to cover CUPs and transient...
Yeah, just transient rentals.
So, when the TRL has to be renewed annually, it just is automatic? They don't have to come to the planning commission again, and, and say, you know, I want to renew my, my license?
If they're compliant with their T O T. payments, and they're otherwise in compliance, and we don't have, now, we'll have a process, you have these dings against you. Yes, it gives us that ability. But right now, if there's no violations, and they've been compliant in payment, timely payment of the T O T., it's a renewal process.
Which kind of aligns with what I wanted to ask, in section 3-1.302, subsection A., it says that no person may begin a transient rental without obtaining and maintaining a license in good standing. And good standing is not defined. So, can we define that... And good standing is not defined, so can we define that now, or is it defined somewhere else?
Good standing, I think.
Good standing refers to they're not in violation of any, that we, when we check for the renewal, that they're not in, that we do not know that they're in violation of any of the conditions of approval for a transient license. If they are, then we have the ability not to renew the license.
And there is the list of what the, what the bad behavior, violations are.
My concern about having an annual review of the license would be that is more of an entitlement, and we'd have to do all the due process notification of the neighbors and stuff like that, if it's an annual renewal that comes before the Planning Commission. We'd have, we'd have to send out the, the, you know, the notices to everyone.
So is.
Thirty notices.
I got you. So is there a way, though, when their license is up for renewal, the Planning Commission, um, at their regular meeting can announce, those licenses that were up for renewal and were granted administratively?
We can.
I mean, the, the Planning Commission is not in that process. It goes through finance, I mean, we could, we would be.
Well, yeah, but can finance tell the plan, can that be in part of the staff report for the Planning Commission, and then can someone report that out? Because I'm sure that there's neighbors and stuff that would like to know if the one next door got renewed or not.
Why don't we do this? Since it has to come before the council every year as part of the consideration of the cap, we can bring that information to the council, because you're ultimately the decision maker. So on that, every year when we bring the issue of whether you're going to put a cap on it, we include in that, in the last year, here's how many of the licenses were renewed, here's how many weren't, were not renewed, so you have an accurate count.
Right, but not everybody's TRLs are in the same month.
No, this would be.
Yeah, it's all January.
Just in real time, is that, is that super difficult and costly to just have finance say, included in the staff report and say, okay, this one came up for renewal and it was.
They're all in January.
They're all in January?
Because it's a business license. You're getting your business license renewed at the beginning of the year.
So if they came to Planning Commission in July and said, I want a, a TRL?
That's an application.
For the renewal, it happens in January for everybody. It doesn't happen on the, it doesn't happen on the application date, it's.
Oh.
Yeah.
Right.
Did not know that.
Yeah, but I think that's appropriate to have it be done for, because you're asking for us to see it too. So if you have it for council with part of the cap discussion every year in January, it becomes annual like the growth does in the, in mid, mid-year.
Okay, and then, um, similarly, um, can, can we make public, or is that a violation of something? Can we make the list public of CUPs and TRLs that are active? Can, can that be on the website? Can anybody just look?
It's on there, yeah, that's.
It's on there?
Yeah, because we have that information with, in order to file a complaint, so it's going to be all part of this process. You can do this from your phone or from a computer.
Okay, and then.
We'll have all those on there.
On, on the bad boy list, going back to that, if somebody is caught doing an illegal rental, can they be on a forever list that they can never do it legally? Is, is that, you know what I mean?
You're trying, yeah, that they would have a ban for doing it.
You tried to get away with it, and now we're not going to let you do it legally.
I'll look at that, yeah. Meaning that they were doing it, they weren't paying their TOT, they never, they tried to sneak under the radar.
Yeah, like Leslie brought up a, an example, and you know, we, we all know it goes on, but you know, so. And I'm sure we snared some just through this process too. But, so I think, you know, if you try and cheat the community.
I think both the individual and the property, sure, if we can ban them.
Oh, I don't think the property, because if the, if they sell it.
Well, no, but we have property under multiple individuals, so.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's item six. Which, we'll get to that.
Should I ask a couple of questions about Debbie's cap items real quick before we move on? Is that okay? Um, one of the, one of the discussions that's come up repeatedly is if it should be an overall cap, a neighborhood cap, um, a cap on the number per owner, which I know we'll talk about in six. I'm wondering if we can look at, possibly in a future meeting, with regard to the cap, similar to how we've had a few neighborhoods ask for permitting for certain parking, if we need to look at it in that instance, if a neighborhood has a certain request based on saturation, which I think you guys are going to kill me for, because that feels like a lot to manage. Um, but I'm wondering if we can at least just look at that issue, if that's something that needs to be reviewed that way, so that it's not necessarily applicable to the entire city, but to a neighborhood, and that a certain percentage of the neighborhood has to be able to stand up and say, this is what we want to do based on that.
We can look at that, that's also item number six.
I know, yeah.
We can address.
I just, she brought it up with this, so I wanted to.
And again, let me just, spoiler alert. Because we're not adopting the ordinance tonight.
Yeah.
If there's suggestions that come out of item six.
We can add them in.
We can add them in.
Right, yeah, perfect, perfect, okay. Let's move on. Do we need a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Thank you guys very much for that.
Yeah, up a little bit. Thank you.
And bump you up a couple degrees. So it's on like some Arctic, not wholly. We just didn't want it to be too, so it was like super stuffy when we walked in. So we were like, yeah.
Okay, and we are back from break. Item number six.
Thank you, Mary. I was just trying to clarify as far as the direction on item number five. Make sure we're all on the same page that that's coming back at the next council meeting, or the August 5th meeting?
Yeah, non-special.
Not the, not the special meeting, but the next meeting with the draft with the changes.
Yeah, and those changes will be, will deal with the owner provisions. And we're going to look at the lifetime bans either for multiple violations or if you've been operating without a license. And we'll take in the penalty provisions from the municipal code and other sections and make them specific to transient licenses. And then anything that comes out of item number six.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Okay, so item number six is a companion piece really to the last item number five. And these are the short-term rental legislative measures and really what we've identified both through council discussions and through meetings with the public are that there's three primary other legislative matters that we need to discuss and get some direction on, that being number one, a cap. And a cap concerning the, the number of short-term rentals, however it wants to be discussed by council, whether it's an overall city cap, a saturation, a street, a neighborhood, all of those things we looked at and there, it brings their own challenges of where neighborhoods begin and end, those type of things regarding a cap. The second part is a cap on ownership, that being how many one individual group could have, whether or not you want to limit it to one per individual. And then the last issue being a fee slash tax. And as Scott brought up earlier, if it's a fee, it's a reflection of the actual cost once we make that determination of the city time and expense in order to increase the fee annually on this, or if it's a tax, it would be something that would go on the ballot. And that could be a dollar amount that would be higher and including, that could include a fee or a dollar amount to fund a housing fund, which as I've said many times, I think, you know, to improve the housing situation, which really, we haven't talked about that tonight that much, but really that's the second part of this. That's what we're trying to do is address the lack of affordable housing. And, you know, I think just eliminating short-term rentals doesn't mean that those will be long-term housing units, you know? I, I think that it's safe to say we have just as many housing units that are used two weeks out of a year and sit empty 50 weeks and aren't short-term rentals that are impacting our housing as much and we can't, you know, we have to do something with housing. And I think, I'm of the opinion, we have to build it, we have to develop it, we have to push that. So those are the three issues that we want to talk about. And as it relates to the fee, as we discussed with Mary earlier, that will come up in January on the renewal. So anything we do with the fee, we can do between now and then, and that will be at the next renewal of the fees in January to make sure we fully include those costs. So if we want to start with discussion regarding a, any of these items, but if we just want to go in order and discuss the cap first and get council thoughts on that.
I definitely believe we should have a cap. And I think, I, first of all, I was wondering, how did we arrive at 2,100 housing units? What, what are those? Are those freestanding homes or what is that?
No, I think those, those would be individual housing units. And I think that's a number, Matt, I mean, if you have some input on, on, on this, but that's the number that we use for individual residents.
So that number came from our, well, I used it from our assessment database. So it's on a unit basis. So I live in a duplex, so that would count as two units even though it's one parcel. So I think there's 1,200 residential parcels, but 2,100 residential units in town. So with duplexes, triplexes, that sort of thing.
So that includes Bahia Vista, Sol Vista, any, any of those?
Any of those.
Those are all counted in there?
Yep, at, at a per-unit basis.
Okay, but, so the ones, so like apartment buildings, Eucalyptus Hill and, and all of that stuff is not included?
Those would be included in the 2,100 as well.
But, so like Eucalyptus and Tremont, both are government-controlled, some of them are, are government-controlled and some of them are market rate units.
So for, for the 2,100, it was just residential units, whether it's in a income restricted location or, for example, Fairview doesn't allow vacation rentals. All I looked at for that 2,100 number is residential units. So it's not at the parcel level, but at the unit level.
So to me, since those, so Eucalyptus and Tremont don't allow for vacation rentals, I think that kind of inflates the number of housing units. So therefore, the percentage of vacation rentals to available housing units is much higher than 17%. So I, I, I think that really needs to be looked at so it, in order, so that we can come up with a reasonable cap, you know? So, um, God, how do I, how do I?
Well, Canyon Terrace doesn't allow vacation rentals. So do they get taken out too? And as Matt said, Fairview, Fairview Terrace doesn't allow vacation rentals. Do they get pulled out of the thing?
I think they should. I think.
That's, no, that's not, it, it should be the basis of how many housing units we have. When we build our housing, that's going to get added to the bottom line also.
I think if, I have a few thoughts, but I think if you're looking at a citywide cap, you should be looking at a number of permits and licenses. I personally don't, I have, I think, the mixed feelings of every resident in this community in that I can see both sides of why we would and would not want to institute a cap. I appreciate why we want to do it in terms of limiting the number of units that get turned into a commercial property for the sake of having a vacation rental versus someone who has a home here, is invested in the community and utilizes it as a means to help pay for things, right? I think the goal of it originally was that those homes would be utilized as a residence they can utilize as a second residence. However, it still has someone that lives in it that is part of the community that is, you know, impacting the community positively. The challenge I have with putting a cap on it is we have seen what happens with having conditional use per, well, first of all, we've seen the management side of it, right? So a vehicle list that has a cap of a number of vehicles and a waiting list to manage becomes a wonderful headache to have. Not saying that's not a reason to do it or to do it, but just something to consider. But the challenge that I have is that are you then taking the work that changing conditional use permits to transit, to the licenses that meant to remove that value that we were talking about earlier that realis, realtors put onto houses with those permits? Are you then saying now, and again, it's going to be a license moving forward for new people, so it's not necessarily the same, but are you then adding some level of value back into the house because it had been approved previously for a license, that a realtor could say, oh, I could justify jacking up the rate again by a little bit of money because it was this before and it can be this again? I don't know if that is going to have the effect that we're hoping for. My other concern with that is if you put a cap on it, the number of locations that may choose to just try to rent illegally instead.
Good point.
So, and again, all over the place, I could go for, I could go against. That was part of the reason why I thought maybe a neighborhood discussion might be better possibly, but.
I thought we had brought that up already, right?
Yeah, but it was supposed to be under this topic, not the other one, but I just, Debbie had mentioned it in the previous.
I think in another meeting we had.
We've brought it up a few times.
Because the zoning right now, if you look at, like I looked at it, and it, it doesn't have any provisions for transient rental license anywhere. So can we, can we solve this issue merely by fixing up the zoning map?
So you're saying make a zoning section that is pro or anti?
So that you can, so, so if the zoning was, was properly defined, you know, where this, these are allowed here, here, and here, then you could look at the neighborhood and say, okay, this neighborhood has 15, so no more. Or, you know, it would give the, the planning commission a little more teeth to be able to say, no, there's enough here. But I think it, I think it lies in the zoning, which I know has been under revision for a really long time.
But if you have residential, you know, where we have residential, if you have residential zoning, you would say that in some residential zones, you could not have any or?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, what, what we're talking about is, is maybe doing a, a cap in the residential zone. So depending on where the.
And just as an example, is Debbie's map. This is, this is saturation.
Yes.
This is saturation.
So what, so let's go legally as to how that would work. You would do, you wouldn't necessarily change the zoning citywide. You, you could impose an overlay over the city, which would say that these, you, it's an additional zoning tool where you put an overlay for transient occupancy, where you say in these zones, no transient occupancy rentals, period. So it's an overlay zone. The only, and, and so, so that's just one option that you have. The one thing that I think it's, it's important to look at in terms of the count of residential units that you're looking at to determine whether you should have a cap or not. One of the purposes of a cap would be to make certain that there's year-end housing, year-round housing available to Avalon residents, which is in most cases rental properties. And so I think having the information as to how many units citywide or rental properties are included in that is, it would be a, a fact that you'd like to have because it shows the availability of rental units. And if we exclude them, then you're, then you may not have an accurate picture about the availability of rental units when you're setting the cap. So just an, an information point, which is why we thought it would be, should be included because we're looking at really increasing, or would a cap increase rental units, you know, for residents?
Go ahead, Kelly.
I think Scott actually kind of got to the point that I wanted to clarify, which is I think when we're talking about if council wanted to consider a geographic control for saturation, I mean, I think zoning districts are a little bit different than talking about like neighborhoods, right? So I think some of our zones cover multiple areas that you might consider geographically their own separate kind of neighborhoods or communities. So if that were a direction that you were inclined to go in, I would also kind of reiterate the option that Scott mentioned with the idea of an overlay that would give council and staff the opportunity to define more of a geographic boundary for those controls versus relying on our zoning districts, which are a little bit, I don't think accurately reflect the type of thing that you're trying to discuss right now.
So this is, I'm going to make a stupid comment anyway. And Michael goes, what's new? So if, if I have a rental, that's a commercial use, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a commercial use in a residential area, so isn't that non-conforming?
That's usually what the CUP.
No.
Isn't that usually what the CUP or license covers is the ability to use it in the, for that purpose?
It's not conforming because we allow that as part of our land use regulations.
Well, so then it's like, okay, then we have to rezone every block because it's really commercial.
Yeah, special commercial.
The overlay is much simpler. You're not changing the zones.
Right.
You're just saying.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
It's a secondary layer of regulation just for the purposes of.
Yeah.
See, transient licenses.
We can't request for a map like this to be provided as part of the staff report for planning commission so they can also see the saturation level?
Yeah, I think we had talked about that, that we can provide, we can provide that.
Yeah, good.
We used to do that all the time.
Yeah, I thought it was included all the time. Yeah, yeah. We used to get, literally that.
We used to have that map.
Yeah.
And every, every application had the spots.
Yeah, I mean, it's just so obvious.
Yeah, no, we definitely need to bring that back. And it's going to be so much more accurate.
Right.
Because of the, the fine work, seriously, I commend staff and everybody for doing all the research and narrowing that down. So did that answer number one? To come back with an overlay so we can take a better look?
Well, I think there's other, there's other issues with that. And that's part of the reason, first of all, I want to say I'm supportive of the idea of a cap. I, the reason we had asked in the staff report is to give time is because of these that aren't truly active short-term rentals that we think we can flush out with a higher fee and to see, you know, you're either in or you're out because if they're included in the cap just from this, you know, there's a number and I, and I don't know what it is, whatever council decides, where there's a tipping point, right, for these. And, but we want to make sure whatever that cap number is, those that are allowed are generating what we're creating here, okay? Meaning that if we say you have a CUP, you have the ability to do this, but you're not going to rent it all, you still count against the cap, but you're not generating any TOT. So we get very little benefit from that and a negative against the cap. So the hope was that we could really distill down by increasing the fee and getting the fair cost on this to recognize who really wants to be in.
I can see that. And we can't do the fee yet until we figure out what all those costs are.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. And we can't do the fee until the fee schedule comes up around again, right?
Well, we can bring the fee schedule, but until we do that analysis, as soon as we get that done, it'll be before the fees come due again, for sure.
Okay, good, okay. And the tax probably isn't a very good idea. Kind of a question.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be approved by the voters, right? So it's.
And a dollar amount would have to be approved by the voters.
Correct.
Would we go over the limit?
Any, any tax.
It's not a sales tax.
Yeah.
So it would be a property tax that you'd impose.
Yeah.
So that, that's really the basis of, yeah, we think the cap makes sense, but what's, what's that number? Do we include the non-actives or do we not? And I think you have to because if they sell, then become active, they should count against the cap.
Well, but so now, yeah, I mean, I was dead set on a cap, but now it makes sense that it would pave the way for people to drive up the price and also more illegal ones I would.
But, but the good thing is that by looking at the cap every year, we would have the ability of instituting the cap. So that leaves wiggle room.
And then just to play devil's advocate, my brain initially was thinking, do we do a cap of 400 and test it for a year? So that was the other side of the possibilities.
Right.
Which, I mean, it allows for those who have been on the waiting list to be heard and to potentially be approved. It allows for anyone who's been waiting to be on the list to go through that process. It, I'm, I'm just wondering, I guess, if it's challenging, there's, you know, certain policies you put in place and it's hard to claw them back if you put them in place. If we put a cap in place, is it easy enough to claw that back if we need to or to change it? We can modify it every year, we can do that.
It would, it just may result in a little chaos.
Yeah.
With the map.
Right.
And the, the list. And so another thing is that now that we have host on board with the looking at properties and their compliance, it may make sense to have six months to a year of actual compliance with our regulations and revocations for bad conduct so that when a cap comes to you or the consideration of cap, you, we have gone through the process of weeding out or culling the herd of those misbehaving transient and CUPs out there so that we have the, a list of ones that are active are the ones that are community-friendly.
I'm going to open up a can of worms here, so, of course. Hamilton Cove, all the houses that were approved to be built were supposed to be single-family homes. They were built as duplexes against zoning, residential zoning up there. What happened to our inspectors? Why do we have two, three, four kitchens? And then the owners come in because they were told, if you buy this house, you'll get a rental permit and you can make $7,000 a week for people coming in. None of this has ever been addressed and this goes back to what the heck is going on? Because if a 2,500 square foot home was approved and you now have a duplex at 7,500 square feet, I don't even know if the tax, county tax person's been informed of this because they're probably paying taxes on 2,500 square feet. What are we doing to stop this? Because there's another house that's being built up there. And I know there's a gentleman behind me who has a house that was built up there with multiple places to rent out. And it's supposed to be a single-family home. So they're already away from what the original zoning intent, which was, Hamilton Cove is a residential community, period. It's not a hotel, it's never been a hotel, it's not a condo hotel, although our numbers speak for being a condo hotel. Mortgage companies look at us as being a condo hotel, which impacts my property value. So can we just kind of take a step back and make sure that the buildings that are supposed to be built are built to what they're supposed to be and that there's not shenanigans when somebody comes in and gets a rental permit for a unit even though it's been built out as a duplex or triplex? Just a comment and my can of worms.
Just to clarify that, our house is not a duplex, our house is a single-family home. So before you start stating things, you should really clarify and make sure that you know what's accurate before you state things.
The, if I can, there's one more item I want to bring up for thought on the cap. We do have some, the only legal way to bank a CUP is to have a full-time tenant in there. And that's something I think we want to encourage. So whatever the thought process is from council, I think there should be some accommodation for those, you know, that how are they going to apply to the cap? Because we want to encourage that, but does that account against the cap, I guess?
If, if we were to have a full cap on everything, I think those should actually live outside of the cap only because, or in some capacity, a different space in the cap, because that's what we want to encourage is year-round housing. We want to have housing for year-round tenants at some point. Like I know I talked to a homeowner this morning who said, you know, I have 10 units that I own, two of them are vacation rental, the other eight are banked because they are year-round rentals and I intend on keeping it that way. That's, that's, I think, what we would hope to see if it's possible for them to be able to do that. You know, they're, she's had the properties for a long time and so it's not something that is, the amount of money she's having to pay for the houses is much smaller than most now with a full mortgage, so. But I'm not sure how we would manage that. I don't know if you guys have any ideas on how to.
Right.
How to offset that. Maybe that counts as a half a unit instead of a whole unit. Real creative. I, yeah, I would think maybe if we can have a secondary space for, so perhaps if it's in use current, as, current licenses and, and CUPs, it's a certain, to a certain number. And then the other ones live outside up to a certain number. So maybe it's 350 at the cap and 50 additional at the year-round space.
We did have a number, right, of the year-round.
We do. We do, and that's why I'm throwing that out. So we, we do have that number, it's, but it's, it's how, you know, one more consideration just while you're talking about the cap.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then to Debbie's point about ownership, I was trying to, I've been trying to rack my brain since we got the agenda as to how you can ensure that a property owner only owns a certain number of units and it's, I think, almost impossible.
Well, one, I don't know if that's legal because this is a land use regulation and you're looking at how this use of the property. you're looking at how this use of the property impacts other uses. And when you're looking at owner, who owns it, that is, takes it out of the pure land use thing. And so if that's the council's desire, we can look at that. If you can limit it to a certain number of units or owners. I, I'm, my first blush is that's not going to be legal. But if your desire is to look at that, because it's, again, this is all on a land use regulation and how the use of a property impacts the neighbors. And who owns it does not necessarily determine the impact on neighbors, especially with the new regulations and where you've got to, you know, have these, you have to meet with the, meet with the resident who's the, the transient occupant, et cetera. But we can look at that if that's your direction. I'm just skeptical that that's...
Well, and just looking at like some families who own properties in town, right? So you could say, great, my sisters and I are in a trust to own property. So I'm listed on one house, my sister is listed on another, Sarah's on a third, her husband's on a fourth, Jordan's on a fifth, my mom's on a sixth. You've got six different property owners. It's the same family, which you know, but how are you going to manage that, though? Like...
It, it can be on a case-by-case basis, but these people that are swooping in and buying up houses specifically to turn them into vacation rentals, and they are a business, they're, they're basically a little corporation. And, you know, they're buying up, you know, four, five properties and speci, I have no problem with the families, you know, that this, that's how we started vacation rentals, with, with the mom and pops that loved to come here. And they always wanted a piece of the island, and they couldn't really afford it. And so they rent it out when they're not here. I, I don't have a problem with that. That's the way it used to be. But then in COVID, it, it like exploded when everybody was buying properties. I mean, it seriously exploded. And so many. And so those kind of situations are, so that's what I mean, on a case-by-case basis, when they apply for their license, they, if they're an LLC, they have to list all the num, the names of the LLC and then have staff, every single one, you know, track it down, see if they're affiliated with another one. It's, it's all public record, I'm sure, but require that as part of the application process. And that way, we could see, okay, you already own one of these. And no, you can't have another one. If you want another one, go to Big Bear or somewhere. I'm sorry, Big Bear, I didn't mean that. But...
Do other cities have anything like that currently?
I haven't seen that. No. And we represent Big Bear. So I won't, I won't tell the city attorney that.
I apologize already, but I thought San Diego had, they could only just have one.
I'm not aware of that.
They might. I've, I've seen that out there. I have seen that.
I've seen the idea that, we talked about it before, but I just don't know if it's...
So what we added to the, going back, and I hate to go back to item five, but what we added on that is the Planning Commission shall consider and may use as a reason for denial of granting a transient rental license whether the applicant has other transient rental properties in the city, and if the applicant has previously been found in violation of any provision. So it has both of those. So it is, we put it in as a consideration. The difficulty that I think we'll find is LLCs might be one thing, but trusts are going to be something else. I think we'll have a harder time finding, I know for a fact we have at least one property has 38 shares in a trust among 32 different people. It's all chopped up and, and I, we will never know how, you know, who is a, essentially a beneficiary of a trust. We, we don't have access to those.
True. But like I said, on a case-by-case basis and what you just pointed out in item five, you know, I mean, just...
That's why we put it in there, yeah.
So, so, yeah, because I think it's better to have it in the ordinance than not. Because that way, we've got teeth. And we can look at it. And, you know, I, I think it's up to us to protect our community from vultures. And not saying that, that people in a trust, like, like, you know, with the Millions of Sisters and all that stuff, I'm not saying that they're all vultures, but there are vultures out there, and we know exactly.
Jordan is kind of a vulture.
What?
Jordan is kind of a vulture.
Oh. Kinda.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, and I, we didn't talk about that in the previous discussion, really, but that, we did put that in there to make that a delineated consideration.
Right. Well, I, I purposely held back until six. So that's why I'm talking about it now. And I did see that in five.
Santa Cruz has it, San Diego Oceanside's working on theirs right now, South Lake Tahoe also has it.
A limit on the number that somebody cut on.
And LLCs need to be in good standing with the state, which isn't in the ordinance, which you might want to put in there, because you'll have multiple LLCs that own multiple properties all over. Let's say they're based in Nevada unless they have the ability to do business in the state of California, and they're in good standing and have paid their dues in the state of California. They should not be allowed to be a property owner here. The second component to what Yasani is saying, a lot of these LLCs really operate as hotels, but they're not encumbered by the inspections, the permits, the employees that our hotels here on the island do. San Diego and I believe Palm Springs have enacted a percentage of your business. So if you increase the fee for the commercial business license, you are also entitled to a percentage of their business. And in San Diego, if you own so many properties, it's up to 5%. So if you're making a million and a half dollars in rental income from our properties, in addition to the TOT, you're paying a business tax because you're running a hotel.
Leslie, good to know.
Well, and to that point, before Leslie speaks also, the, they already are subject to the 12% that hotels are subject to anyway. So at least that is already even, but...
But still.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm the Number Girl again tonight. It was stated there were 363 active STRs and 32 of those were reported minimums days of activity of three nights. However, it's my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, those 32 still have CUPs or STR licenses. Is that correct?
Yes.
Although I understand by raising the fees, you may be flushing them out, it seems prudent that the total number of vacation rentals should remain at 363, and you may not deduct those 32 until they have been revoked or relinquished, right? So we still are at 363, which with the 2,100 is 17.2%. I really think that you need to consider, as Mary was speaking, Bird Park, Tremont, Senior Housing, Eucalyptus Hill, Fairview Terrace, Canyon Terrace, none of those are ever going to be in the vacation rental pool. So these, this percentage of 17.2%, 17.2%, is really lower than how many units are actually percentage-wise in town being used as vacation rentals. Something to look at. If there are 20 STR applications waiting for approval and they are approved, which I would think at least 75% of them would be, we would then have at least 383, which brings us up to 18.2%, which is still really not a correct number to use. And if you keep going, as the 400 number was mentioned, and you use the 2,100 number, which I feel is incorrect when you're calculating, that's 19%. So why not have a cap? You're going to review it in a year. In six months' time, you're going to have your new fees, and you can look at it and see how you're doing. Let this system that you're creating with Host be your structure to weed out the bad ones and allow new ones in if there's space. And really, we're on an island. This is what I brought to you two years ago. The San Juan Islands created a cap. It works. It's not like people can go live somewhere else. And I think now that you have Host happening, illegal vacation rentals will be reported. We have a place to report them. So please do consider a cap. And I would ask you to get the number of all of those units we just mentioned. Bird Park, Tremont, Eucalyptus, Senior Housing, Fairview, Canyon Terrace.
It's all of this to be here, this...
All of that. That could be 400, 400 units. Yay! Wonderful. They won't be vacation rentals. But you're really, if you use that 2,100, your percentage is going to go way up of how many vacation rentals you have. So please, consider a cap. You could always revoke it in a year. What harm is it going to do, really? What's the worst-case scenario, as Pam Albers used to say?
So let me ask a question. It seems to me, though, if we're going to look at saturation, we have to do that overlay map first. Because that might affect our cap. If we say lower Descanso is, you know, whatever it is, and then it seems like we need to see the map first because then we would know who we're picking on, or who we're not going to pick on, and that might determine. So if we say we're no more there, well, then we have a cap. They're going to, well, then hell, we can have a whole bunch more up here because we're not allowing them down there.
I, I guess that goes to the issue of what would council, do you want a cap per neighborhood, a cap per street, a cap, or an overall city cap, a saturation percentage? And that's, that's what's being discussed when you're talking about the percentage. We haven't really discussed that, and that's not the point of saying there's 2,100 units. We're talking about a number versus a percentage. But if you wanted to do a percentage, then what, yes, what is that based on?
But I also think that the 2,100, I agree with Leslie. I mean, it's, it's misleading because I want to know what the available base is for the possibility of a short-term rental. And those, so if the, if those, like Fairview and, and all the ones she just listed off are included in that 2,100 number, I do think that that's misleading. I would like to know what that finite number is.
There could be 500 or 600 of those when you, when you take up all those places.
Right. But I just want to clarify, I'm not, we didn't bring up the, we're not saying a percentage. The city's not saying...
I know, but it helps me see better. It helps me understand better.
We're saying, here's what the real numbers are, not a overall percentage. We didn't, we're not emphasizing the 2,100 number. That, so from a misleading standpoint, we're not saying that. We're saying we have, here's the number we have. They're, they're spread out throughout the city.
No, I'm not saying you're misleading.
What do we want to, where do we want to put it? Is it a percentage or is it an overall number? I mean, I've kind of heard both.
But, but so, but if you, if you saw what the available stock is, then I would have a better idea of how to come up with a number to put a cap to it. You know what I mean?
I do. I'm just going off of, here's what we have. We all know what's out there, right? We all know what the feeling is on a Friday, Saturday night when you're going through up and down the street, you know? How many more can we take versus the percentage? Because like the mayor was saying, if they're somewhere else, if we push them to a lower percentage neighborhood and push them out, it, that's what we would be doing if it's a straight, you know, neighborhood percentage cap. It, it becomes difficult defining those neighborhoods. So like I said, I'm supportive of the overall number for the city. I think it's a much easier thing to enforce and put that cap on that number.
And before, just, so if there's 20 or 21 people that want to come up and get a TRL right now, can we delay that because we don't know where they are and they could be where we think it's saturated? What, why no, Michael?
No.
The moratorium is at the end of the month.
The moratorium expires in...
But the Planning Commission can take their time.
Well, there's a certain, there's a certain permitting stream act that they have to make action.
And everybody has to be notified and...
But they could, I don't know when, I don't know if those are scheduled for, I don't know if they're scheduled in, in August or September. If they're in September, it will be entered after the new ordinance is in place.
Okay.
And we would have to schedule, we would have to schedule some events for those. We would have to schedule inspections and some other things, yes.
Yeah. I was just going to say, in terms of, as Scott mentioned, permit streamlining and all of that, it is not really possible that they would be heard in August.
Okay. So what if it's September?
It would be September at the earliest to give staff the opportunity to review those applications, prepare the information for Planning Commission consideration. I've already got other plans for August that I'll probably tell you about the next meeting.
So this new ordinance, assuming the first reading is on...
August 5th.
August 5th. Then we come, and let me just look at my calendar here. We come back, August 19th for the second reading. It's effective 30 days after that, which is actually, I think the Planning Commission meeting is the 28th, 28 days later. So...
September?
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
But let's say all of these people are on Descanso. The, because she's going to be seeing some. There's no way you can do all 20 of them in one meeting. I mean, that's impossible.
No, they're not going to be all scheduled in one meeting.
Yeah. So, okay.
And, and I would also say regardless of the additional considerations related to a cap or percentage of saturation, we still have some existing language in the code that's carrying forward that allows for consideration of those things. Obviously, you're looking to refine that more and provide kind of more guardrails in that. But there is still language right now that can be relied upon.
Currently, right.
I think in conjunction, you know, with the, a more robust staff report and the maps. So there, that information will be available regardless of what you have in place when these move forward.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir. Okay. All right. I'm sorry. Make you stand there. So, okay.
Actually, the Planning Commission meeting in August was on the 20th? No? Yes, it's on the 20th. That is 31, like 34 days after. So first reading, we do it.
No, you're September. It would have to be September.
September 17th, I think. So it's...
It's the 17th. Yeah, no, yeah.
I think you're off by like a day.
That's okay. Okay. All right. Where are we?
So I think there's direction on, we're going to work on a fee that we'll present to you when we adopt the fees. With respect to, I can just verify...
Ownership cap.
Ownership limits. That would come back in, in a future ordinance. And then for the cap, we can look at the, do you want us to propose a cap at the next meeting when we bring the ordinance back? Or do you want to have this ordinance be adopted and then study it, and then the cap has to come back to you every year anyway? But we can give direction on the cap.
We want to look at the, the overlays. When can we get the overlays?
I don't want any stuff left out. I'm, I'm tired of kicking the can down the road.
Okay.
So if we're, if we're talking about a cap, then let's talk about a cap. Let's put it in it.
So they, so, so I will tell you that you can put a cap in the ordinance. An overlay is going to be a zoning thing, which is going to go through a whole process. That's a three, three or four-month process. But we can put the cap in if we have an agreement on what that is at the next meeting, when we bring the ordinance back. I just, you just give us direction, and if there's direction for that, we will put language in it. The overlay is going to take three or four months because it's a planning.
Well, the overlay will take time. Would you be able to provide us with the maps that are current for saturation? That should be able to be provided.
And that's what I was going to say, is we do have, already have a data set of all of the existing short-term rentals that we can work with GIS to prepare a map so you can visually see where everything is right now as part of your discussion.
Is it permissible to include the current waiting list of applicants? Or are you not able to do that because they're not?
We can do that. It's all public documents.
Okay. Yeah, if we can do that, please.
There's 21 read part of it. Yeah.
Just so we can see where people are waiting for what's, yep, okay.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
So are they going to make a decision?
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know. I just, I know I'm the newest one on council.
This is a big deal.
And, yeah. And so we had a two-year moratorium. And why are we so rushed? Why did it come down to the wire? Why couldn't we have had some of these conversations while we were still collecting data, just on the whole ideas of stuff? You know, I just, I just feel like this is so last minute. And I just, oh, it just really irks me.
Well, what I, again, what I would say is we had to spend a lot of time going through 40 years of records that were not very well kept in order to figure out what the number is. Because otherwise, we'd say, counsel, you want to put a cap on this? And you'd say, well, how many do we have? We, we don't know.
But we could, we could have at least discussed the idea, the premise of having a cap, whether or not we were into it or not, and which way we wanted to go, and that kind of stuff, you know, and say, okay, we'll wait for a number. And I'm not discounting all the hard work that you did. And I totally appreciate everything that you and staff did. and I totally appreciate everything that you and staff did. I am not, I'm just saying that I wish we would have been able to have some empirical discussions while data collecting was going on. That's all I have to say.
Okay, so, being that's what you just said, do you want to come up with a number tonight?
Do I want to come up with a number for the cap tonight? To, to bring back, and, yeah, I, I think, I think it's a good idea to try it for just a year. And so...
What would that number be?
That number would, we have three sixty-three right now, so, at least it threw out four hundred earlier, you know?
We can always make it tighter if we feel the need to at some point.
Exactly.
I mean, we do have three eighty-three, I believe, isn't it?
I was going to say three eighty.
Yeah. Three eighty going once?
Three eighty-six, including the banked ones.
Three eighty-six going once?
No, she's, the, the number that's currently there is three eighty-six.
Eighty-six, so, so you add the twenty to that, there's four hundred, so there you go.
But do we want all twenty approved?
Well, just to say, there's...
There's nine banked, there's thirteen banked, there's one banked. That's twenty-two. What number could you live with, yes, honey?
Eighty-five.
Three eighty-five? Okay, sold.
Three eighty-five, that's less than what we currently have.
Three sixty, three ninety.
I'm just saying, we have three...
Well, that's less than the current cap.
Yeah, we have three eighty-six.
Oh. But some of those are banked and not giving us any money.
That's true.
Because they're occupied by year-round renters.
But if they get sold, right?
Then they could come back.
They would be, they would automatically, they'd be active.
Oh, they'd be active.
I think you're legally, you're legally best to say, to pick a number based upon what you currently have and the potential applicants that are already, have applied. But that doesn't mean that those are going to be granted.
Yeah, they're not all...
And that number would be...
Four ten.
Four ten.
I just want, I just hope the planning commission is on board with us. Because if we do this and then, but, oh, what the hell, and then they just, everybody's compliant. Everybody's good, and everybody gets them. It's going to stop after these twenty.
They may be.
They're appointed by you.
Yeah, the planning commission is looking at these. They're, they're very diligent about this process.
Okay, well, good. So the number is, drumroll, please.
Four ten?
Four ten?
I was going to say four eleven, just because I'm a three-eleven fan, it's close to that number.
Four ten, that's it, four ten.
Fine.
Like ten-four, but backwards.
Right, comments on that, folks?
One more than four oh-nine.
I do, I do.
I was talking to those folks.
I know, I know. So, so if that's the number, that's fine. But we're going to have to incorporate, we're going to have to establish a policy on a waiting list now. That's the next step, is if you have a cap, you have to have, how are we going to treat a waiting list?
Well, we can't do the waiting list until we have the overlay.
No, you can do it with a cap.
Well, you can do, you can do a waiting...
No, because if, if they, if it turns out that they're, okay, so they're on the waiting list, and then they turn out, turn out, but they want them all on Descanso, and we've, we've put a, a cap on Descanso Street, why are they even on a waiting list?
Then they're on the waiting list for, they'd be, it would be difficult, but you can do it, you can have a waiting list. If you're in an overlay area and you're on a waiting list, then when one comes available in that overlay area, you go on there versus if you're on a waiting list that's not in that area, you can proceed.
You know what, I think, great, great idea. But I think you need to have a special council meeting just on this alone. Because you don't have a lot of people from the community here, and I totally applaud where you're going. There's other issues behind it. The map is very important because there are certain parts of town that are at a hundred percent. So I, I think we've, we've gone this far and done all this due diligence on everything else. We probably need to have the conversation. That's probably going to be very heated, but you have to give people the opportunity to speak about it.
Well, it's not, it's not approved, this is just to come back for the next one.
No, 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 I know, just kicking it around. But I think there should be a special, because people aren't here to even participate in the conversation. Some people are, but...
I appreciate that, but I also, I'm really tired of people saying I didn't know about it.
I got you, I got you, I mean, that's why, that's why a lot of us are here.
I'm an advocate for informing as much as we can, but also, guys, we've been working towards this.
And there's two hearings for this.
Right, yeah.
It's got, it's an ordinance, it's both meetings in August.
Okay, cool. And then, one of the things that I think Mary brought up, which was, if we do have this waiting list, what's the prioritization? Because if you have an LLC...
I'm going to ask that question.
That already has ten properties here, and they're top of the waiting list, yet we have a, a family that has been here forever, and their mother died, and they inherited the house, and the taxes have gone up, and they need to do the vacation rental. I mean, where are you going to cut the, split the baby down the middle? So there, there's a lot of things that are involved in this conversation. And, you know, to Mary's point, we don't want to be a, a huge hotel with LLCs everywhere. It's another thing to have family here. And that's, that's how this community began, was the families that come year after year and contribute. And then also, the taxing on the businesses.
And what I'm going to say is, whatever we, policy for a waiting list, the ordinance is going to say, staff shall develop a policy for waiting list which shall be approved by council, and that, that way, it's not an ordinance which needs two meetings and in effect thirty days. So, you know, if, the ordinance would establish that there will be a waiting list.
And the staff, staff and council will have a waiting list as a separate.
Before, as, as soon as we can get our thoughts together, we may want to have a discussion on what we want that. But all then also have the information on the viability of limiting people to one that may be a factor in that, so.
But can we say what we also want to make sure the staff is looking at? Like, for example, all the LLC affiliations and whatnot?
Yes.
And so if we're talking now, so this is going to come back, and so we're giving you recommendation, and it's going to come back. So we just talked about a number for a cap, but then Annie's still talking about the overlay. So that's like saturation by neighborhood. So those are not the same things, right? So, but we can still, because we still want to see the overlay. We still want to see...
We can go forward with this before we get the overlays.
We're going to bring the information and the maps in terms of where you can see saturation to the next meeting. So you'll have that map, okay? You adopt the cap at the next meeting. It is going to take a while because the overlay is a planning issue thing. That takes a while to get through. But you can use that map and give us direction as to what you want to look at, what you want us to look at for the overlay. And looking at the map, you may decide that the four-ten number should be adjusted.
Okay, so we currently have a color-coded zoning map, right?
Just for zones, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so can we use that zoning map, that existing map that we have, and then put the existing rentals in that so we can kind of see where they are? You know, so it'll give us an idea of, you know, where, what the overlay would look like, right?
I think you said that we had something with dots on it.
I, I just don't know, that's an IT question, whether our, whether the dots can have colors in these zones.
I just don't know.
Yeah, I think there's a, a number of different, just based on the feedback I'm getting from you, I think there's a number of different kind of layers on a map that we can create so you have all that different information. If you're, you know, the easiest one would of course be, here's the color-coded APNs where active transient rentals are happening. We could certainly provide a map to correlate that with zoning districts if that's something you're interested in knowing about. You know, some of them are in high density, some might be in low density. We, I can give you all of that information sort of in different formats so you can compare. Because that might, you know, obviously inform how you might want to draw lines on an overlay in terms of creating saturation areas, for instance. So we can absolutely do that.
Good, I missed a lot of that.
That'd be good.
She says they can do it.
Okay. All righty.
Do you have direction?
Thank you.
Is there any other part of that?
We do.
Oh, one of the questions, sorry, that came up, I'm sorry to keep going, was, and we, I know we talked about the LLC differences and things like that. People are asking if full-time residents can have preferential treatment on that list over others, and I don't think that can happen, but I'm just saying it out loud for the community to be sure.
I, I'm just...
You said that fast.
We can look at it legally. My concern is, is that your waiting list, you're going to have ten different waiting lists.
Yeah.
Right? And then, and then is, is it...
Is it manageable?
What if it's an LLC by a full-time resident?
Right.
And then it gets confusing.
Which bucket do they go into? I'm just throwing it out there because it was...
Which is fine, we can figure it out. We, we sent people to the moon in the nineteen-sixties, but we can figure this out.
We could do the...
All righty, well, thank you, everyone, for all of your comments. We're moving on to item seven, and they've been patiently waiting in the audience.
Okay, item seven, cruise ship port agreement discussion. Yes, Mayor, we do have a number of people that have been, that are waiting in the audience that are here on this. We appreciate all the feedback that we've gotten. So just kind of walking this back a little bit, a little over a year ago, probably almost close to two years ago, we started looking at what documentation, what agreements do we have with our cruise ship partners? And we really didn't have any. We just had a, an anchorage identification of where they could anchor in preference when we have multiple cruise ships, of who gets preference on anchorage. But no, nothing governing cruise ships and who's coming here. We've obviously encountered a number of different issues regarding the number of visits, the size of cruise ships, the impact on the city. So we opened it up to our three primary cruise ship partners, that being Disney, Carnival, and Royal Caribbean, and asked them to, you know, that we were looking at entering long-term port agreements, A, if they would be interested, B, if they're interested, what would they, you know, give us preferences on days of the week and what would work, and size of ship, and the number of visits, that type of thing. All three did submit term sheet proposals with that basic information. We're much further down the road, obviously, with Disney than the other two because in February of this year, we approved a term sheet with Disney, which led to, you know, we're, we're down the road a little further on a draft of a finalized port agreement. And what we came up with really is the, is the matrix that you have in the staff report, that being, you know, Carnival, Disney, Royal, in those different criteria. Ship passenger count, preferred date, shoulder season, preferred date, summer season, length of agreement, and proposed increase in the rate, CPI adjustment on the rate, guaranteed minimum, and longevity, we included longevity of calling on Avalon because we know of these three, some have been here much longer, some not so long, so we have a little bit more history with them. Really, the goal in this is that, as you can see, when you look at preferred dates, summer season, preferred dates, shoulder season, everybody for the, you know, we have Tuesdays and Wednesdays, that's really, those are the dates. Those are the dates that work for, for the cruise lines for a number of different reasons. So we have three cruise lines really vying for two days of the week. So, but it, but I think there's, I think there's room. I think we have, you know, if I can just kind of lay out, the goal in this is, number one, to maintain really the same number of cruise ships we're at, not to go further, not to go higher. We're not looking to add additional cruise ship visits annually. So we'd, we'd like to keep that number the same, which has really been one fifteen to one twenty, weather-dependent. And what we're asking for counsel is direction on what you feel are the most important considerations for us to look at when we're picking our, our partners in this. Is it capacity of the ship, the number of visits, the interaction with the business community, the longevity of time with Avalon, the overall impact on the city? I mean, what, what are the most important criteria? Because they're all pretty similar when you look at what, what they're offering, okay? So what, what should we focus on? That's really the, what we're looking at. I know we have both some folks from the business community and, and then representatives from the cruise lines that, that are here that I'm sure would like to speak.
Would you like to speak first? Leon?
Excuse me, Mayor Marshall, esteemed members of City Council, Mr. Maestros, Mr. Campbell, and port partners, and valued members of the community. I'm absolutely delighted to be here today to speak to you. My name is Leon Sutcliffe. I work for Carnival Cruise Line. I'm based out of Miami. I have a broad range of responsibilities. Mainly, my first responsibility is I, I'm part of a team in my Miami office, and we're responsible for the global strategy, global deployment of a fleet of twenty-nine vessels across the world. We're a global operator. Furthermore, I have responsibility over the Port of Long Beach, which is our sourcing point, our hub, our home port, where we actually cruise from to visit all these varied destinations on, on the West Coast. So I have some opening comments. Oh, and furthermore, I'm responsible for commercial contracting as well. So we've submitted term sheets to Mr. Maestros for consideration, but we'll get into that later. I'd like to first of all, express my delight for this beautiful community. It's my second visit in two weeks. Any opportunity to come here, I'll, I'll gladly accept, even without an invitation. I find the warmth of the community and the story that is, is open to us here very enlightening. It's a unique destination, and we value it very much in terms of our itinerary deployment strategy. I have a few opening comments that I would like to run through. But I read your agenda as I was coming over, and, and in listening to the, the depth in which you, you go into in terms of how you, you value the community and how passionate you are about tourism and the organization, and this deep history of Catalina, it fits well into Carnival's strategy in terms of where we like to take our guests. I personally believe that we have an obligation as a company to deliver the most optimized experience possible. And that means for not only our guests, but also the community and the good residents of, of Catalina. So we're looking to seamlessly integrate into the community as best we can. And furthermore, tell stories, which is, is what we want to do. That's our cruise business. We like that diversity of an itinerary. Everywhere we go, tell a story. And there is a unique, classic story that is available for us to tell on the cruise ships. Like, like you, Carnival Cruise Line understands the importance of building a long-term relationship. Our corporation and our affiliated brands are the backbone of cruising in California. We have combined sixty years' experience out of California through those affiliated brands. We represent two-thirds of the cruise market in California. It's about one-point-two million of the sector's one-point-eight million cruise guests each year in the state. We've been sailing to Catalina Island for plus twenty-five years. I've been with the company, I'm in my fourth decade, thirty-one years with Carnival, and I used to sail in here as an officer on the ships back in the day. And so myself, I have a long history with this environment. We need to go back in history and go through some hard copy files and, and actually pin down on that date. But we were the first company to come here, and we were also the first company to return following the pause in operations due to COVID. And we would like to thank city leadership for working with us through all those various protocols to get us back into, into cruising. I'm also proud to say that Carnival, as I've mentioned, was the first company to call here. We've built interest in developing a market which other cruise lines now are, are taking advantage of. So based on the last thirty years or so, we've worked together, we've grown a business, and what we're looking for is some recognition of loyalty. We've been a loyal operator out of California, and we've loyally shown our deployment strategy to this community through the prosperous times and also the difficult times. Furthermore, we've personally made a great deal of investment into Long Beach, which, as I mentioned earlier, is our home port, it's our hub. This port services over two-hundred-and-five calls annually out of California, of which we know a majority of those calls are... of which we know a majority of those calls are coming here. We've partnered with many local businesses, some of them cherished businesses, I must say. So I really personally value the tour operators. I also value the, the input that we get from our shore excursions and also our tender boat company. And quite frankly, if it wasn't for a tender boat company, which I refer to as the gateway to the destination, there would be no business at all. So huge kudos to Catalina Classic Cruises for providing that gateway. Furthermore, we've been listening to the feedback from the community and our regular conversations with Mr. Maestros, and we've recognized that our term sheet incorporates some changes in a deployment strategy, which we're hoping to get into at a later date when the time is right. As I mentioned, we've been sailing to Catalina for plus 25 years, and, and I'm here before you today to basically ask for your support when the time is right, when it's time to vote and two companies are, are approved for term sheets. So this is the spirit of my visit. It's to show you the commitment from Carnival Cruise Line, the commitment from the organization to deliver the best optimized messaging and experience we can possibly deliver. I will say to you all, Annie, you've got my contact information, Mr. Maestros, you've got my contact information. I'm always available. I firmly believe that I want to, and my company wants to deliver the best experience possible. I'm welcoming to any feedback that you have that we can help to deliver that experience. So I don't wish to ramble on much longer. I wanted to thank you all for this opportunity to listen to me. As you can see, I'm very passionate about my brand. So I'll leave it at that point. Thank you very much for your time.
And happy birthday. Elena?
Hi there. Hi, guys. I don't do this often. Oh, sorry.
I love my bed.
You're all good.
The only one I call.
Hi, many of you know me, many may not. My name's Elena. I am the Experience Manager for Immersed Sidom Theater, and we're also a shore excursion with Carnival Cruise Lines. So after speaking with my CEO today and many times previously, we have decided to share a statement regarding our work with the cruise ships. So thank you. After opening Immersed in late 2023, we were taken on by Carnival Cruise Lines, who worked closely with us to develop our shore excursions, both an individual tour and a combo tour with a part, with a partner business from Catalina Island. We've had nothing but overwhelmingly positive experiences with Carnival guests and Carnival staff in the, in the almost two years since, and approximately 30% of our revenue has come from their visitors. And that's powerful. We likely would not still be operating if not for their partnership and investment in our small business. They were the first to take a chance on us, which is really appreciated as a small business. Not many big places do. And this paved the way for Disney to also take us on earlier this year for the first time. We've had the same excellent experience with Disney and their guests. So please take that into consideration when you vote. Thank you.
So have you done anything with Royal?
I have not. We, we did a request, and we had someone come out and do a site visit, and they found that we were not appropriate for their demographic.
And let me just ask another question. So when Carnival uses your excursions and Disney, do they reimburse or whatever the term would be at different rates?
So the agreements, I, I'd prefer not to speak on our specific agreements, but I would say that they're both very similar. And that we're very pleased with both agreements.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Grace Upton, and I'm here to share my experience working with Carnival Cruise Lines as a local operator. For the past 10 years, I have handled the cruise ship contracts for Parasol Catalina and now handling my own contract for wet spot rentals. Thanks to the partnership, we have been able to create full-time jobs for local residents, for our local residents while providing pay increases and bonuses to our team. This collaboration has allowed us to develop exciting new tours, helping us to stay open year-round, providing services not only to cruise ship guests, but also independent visitors. Carnival Days consistently generate the highest revenue for both of our businesses, with sales increasing by 20 to 30% compared to all the cruise ship days. They have been incredibly supportive of our small operators like us, as I experienced firsthand after the pandemic, when they send their team to help establish a new operating protocols, which also, we're also able to use that during non-cruise ship days. They have engaged with local operators, creating additional opportunities for small businesses and providing fun, funding programs to the ones that need. While I understand the challenges, there has been challenges with the company, I have personally noticed how responsive Carnival has been. From onboard announcements to dress code, we're noticing more and more positive changes with every call they make to the island, showing their commitment to working with our destination. The team has always been responsive and attentive to our concerns, and we truly appreciate the close line of communication we have had throughout the years. I understand decisions like this are complex, but I strongly encourage you to please consider the positive year-round impact Carnival has had in our town. Their guaranteed presence is vital for our local economy and the families who rely on it. Thank you for your time and your dedication to the community.
Y'all want to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Many of you know me. I am Bree Bissard. I am a local business owner here in Avalon. As many of you know, I started Avalon History Tours just over a year ago in direct response to a need expressed by Carnival Cruise Line for more land-based tour experiences. What was originally intended as a side business has quickly grown into a full-time operation, and I attribute much of that success to Carnival's early and continued support of local entrepreneurs. Carnival gave me my first cruise ship contract. They were responsive, open to collaboration, and truly listened to the needs of both operators and guests. What stands out to me is how they have followed through on feedback, not just with words, but with action. They've recently implemented fleet-wide changes that reflect a commitment to being more community- and family-oriented. There is now onboard dress code, they've lowered volume levels on ships, and they no longer allow portable speakers to be brought ashore. These changes are already making a positive difference, even if gradual and show a real investment in improvement, or for improving the overall experience for passengers, for operators like myself, and for the local community. I also want to mention that I reached out to Royal Caribbean a year ago when I first started my company. While I had been offered a cruise ship contract, this was only after initiating contact with them, advertising for my specific niche tour while responding to emails, or while not responding to emails. The timing of our communication and offerings felt very suspicious, knowing that this meeting was going to happen and that they have chosen to only work with one company. That said, Carnival's willingness to partner early and consistently has paved the way for other cruise lines to see the value in this destination. They took the first chance on Catalina Island, and that loyalty and vision should be a factor in the decision over a port agreement. Like many in town, I am thrilled that Disney Cruise Line is expanding its presence here and will be visiting Avalon more frequently. Their decision to invest more on the West Coast is a huge win for our community, and I see that as the beginning of many exciting opportunities ahead. As someone that would be thrilled to collaborate with Disney in the future, I want to emphasize that this isn't about choosing one cruise line over another. My testimony today is about recognizing those that have already made a meaningful sustained impact on Avalon's future. At the same time, I wholeheartedly welcome Disney's increased involvement and look forward to the positive energy and potential that they bring to our town. And thank you for your time and supporting partnerships that help small businesses like mine thrive.
Ready off?
Good evening. Mayor Marshall, distinguished council members, City, City Manager Dave and Scott. So as you all know, I'm sorry, Andrew Wellam, Catalina Classic Cruises. Should have started off with that. As we all know, Catalina Island is a destination deeply rooted in tourism, and whilst our natural beauty draws visitors throughout the year, the realities of seasonality to continue, continue to present challenges. Carnival Cruise Lines has proven to be a consistent and valued partner, not only during, during the busy summer months, but also during the quieter shoulder season, when dependability on visitation is vital to the local economy. Carnival's support extends beyond tourism. It reflects a sincere investment in the well-being of both our visitors and our community. Unlike other cruise lines, which have come and gone sporadically, often repositioning ships with little notice, Carnival has maintained a longstanding and dependable presence on the island for many years. This consistency has been crucial to the success of our operations. The unprecedented nature of other cruise lines presents our tendering operations with significant challenges, from ship staff being unfamiliar with the unique logistical nuances of Catalina to a lack of long-term commitment that prevents us as a company from making necessary investments into our fleet and infrastructure. In contrast, Carnival's reliable schedule and collaborative approach ensures us to plan, improve, and operate with confidence and efficiency, unlike my speech. Our growing fleet, the introduction of larger vessels, including the ADA accessibility, the vessel modifications that we have made, and upgrades to support even medical evacuations onboard would not have been possible without Carnival's continued commitment. These improvements are a direct result of their consistent year-round deployment to the island. Though many of these contributions may not be immediately visible to the public or the council, the long-term impact of Carnival's presence for Catalina's infrastructure and business ecosystem is undeniable. Their partnership has brought steady revenue, operational enhancements for Catalina Classic Cruises, and a, and a critical stability to local businesses. As the city considers long-term agreements for cruise visitations, we respectfully urge you to select Carnival Cruise Lines as a continued partner, as their proven dedication, reliability, and meaningful contributions make them not only a valued stakeholder, but an essential one in the continued prosperity and sustainability of the island. Thank you.
Andrew.
Mayor, City Council Members, City Attorneys, City Manager. My name's Don Beaumont. I was a Conservancy Board Member for seven years. I made it to seven years. And I have a bunch of different companies, Nielsen Beaumont Marine, all seized vessels and aircraft in the United States, Treasury Contractor, Contractor Department of Justice, all small combatant craft. I have a shipyard in San Diego where I do all the Navy SEAL boats. I have facilities all over the United States, and we're going to talk about that a little bit as far as the infrastructure where we support Catalina and how that kind of goes along with what Carnival's support has been to us. We, a number of years ago, were, I got a call from PACI to service Royal Caribbean, the monarch of the seas. And we did that for six years, on Wednesdays. All of a sudden, they called me up and said, we're going to reposition the ship. This is right after they asked me to buy another vessel, which I brought from Boston after Katrina, right after the hurricane, called the Duchess, Catalina Duchess. Many of you have seen the boat. So then all of a sudden, I had this boat, and they left. And then a few years later, Carnival needed larger boats for special needs, handicap, wheelchairs, strollers, children, seniors, electric wheelchairs, whatever. And so we were able to utilize the Duchess. The Catalina King, I also do all the camps, which many of you are aware of. Been doing the camps for 30 years now, seven camps. We moved 40,000 kids here to seven camps. I don't know if you knew that. And all of a sudden, I was getting these other requests. Brian Bray called me and said, hey, what are we going to do with the fuel barge? I need you to cut it up. So I cut it up at my facility in Long Beach. And then all of a sudden, JJ would call me and say, hey, we have a boat out here in the morning we need to get rid of. Would you come take it and cut it up? Then the Conservancy needed a place to put the whites float in the winter. And then all of a sudden, the float at the end of the pier needed a place at the end of the winter to go. Then all of a sudden, we needed other floats to go there. And then I needed to keep some floats there. Then we had the green boats that the island company stopped using that I needed to keep. I mean, it's just Bobby Sherrill's parts that we took the roof off and they did that at my facility. What I'm getting at is, a third of my facility is the tenders that we purchased and developed. And we're talking about $20 million worth of equipment that we purchased and developed for the larger ships. This is planning from four or five years ago for Carnival. And Carnival helps pay my fees to the Port of Long Beach of the lease that I have at S100, where many of the items from the infrastructure of Catalina currently are, including the jet ski barge. Where are all those boats going to go? So we kind of cobbled this Marina I have with all these treasury seizures, the tenders. There's six of them now, and they've just been a great supporter to everything. In the, kind of in the back, you know, of what's going on here. I call it like the circle of Catalina, like the circle of life. It's a circle of Catalina. There's all these things going on that I'm not sure all of you are aware of, that I've just been kind of dealing with for 30 years with these phone calls. So my point is that Carnival's always been there. They have their facility. We had Monday, Tuesday inspiration, imagination. We planned way ahead to have larger tenders, be ready for the bigger ships. You know, they've just, they've just kind of stuck to it and been here with us. I want to bring up one other thing. You know, one afternoon, I got a call from the fire captain supervisor, I think it was, that handled the fire. And every 10 minutes, I had to talk with him and Greg Bombard about the evacuation of the island. So the King is over 700 passengers. It's the biggest boat. I mean, it's 792, is, you know, it's, can take a lot of people. We normally only carry three or 400 campers at a time because they bring everything, including the kitchen sink with them, right, to camp? So, but that's the boat that would really help evacuate. So Greg was bringing his boats, Catalina Express, and we were going to bring the King, and all of a sudden, the fire's coming down the back of Toyon. It's coming down Fox, a lot of smoke. What are we going to do with 380 kids? But I was supposed to come take the last swath of people out of Avalon at about 10 o'clock. Fortunately, Greg was able to get back with one of the Express boats, and he was able to take them. And I said, well, what about the kids? So I went and got the kids. So we don't really have a plan here. And I would never be able to do the camps and help in Avalon because Greg's going to have a few less boats in a few years because of APCD. Maybe, maybe you've heard of some of that, what's going on there. So those extra boats that I have, that we built that fleet up for the Carnival's bigger ships, will help evacuate this island in a natural disaster. Something to think about. Yeah.
That it? Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you for the history, you know.
If you have any questions, I'm here.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. It's a birthday. I know. And I forgot to bring the doggone cake. I blew it. So take him, well, we have a number of bars where he can get a beverage. No recommendations, just numerous blunt ones. Okay. Who has?
So we're not losing any of these lines, right?
Any of these what?
Any of these cruise ships, right? We're not losing any of them?
No.
Okay, because that just sounded like a, a fight to keep them.
Not at all, not at all.
Well, I, I mean, I think there's, there's limited days of the week, right? So that's what we're looking at.
So I'm looking at this table you put together. Carnival Cruise Line, ship passenger load, 3,000 approximately. Disney, 2,700. Royal Caribbean, 3,800. So after this agreement, that means that Forenzy would not be coming back?
So what, first of all, I should have mentioned this. These agreements will go into place whenever we enter in September of 2027. So the port agreements, they have, that gives them two-plus years, everybody two-plus years to make whatever arrangements, scheduling they have to make as a result of this. So yes, the, not specifically to that name of ship, but if we enter a port agreement, they get a preferred date that, that works with them, that they're looking for. they get a preferred date that works with them, that they're looking for. They're committed to the certain line of ship that is in the 3,000 range to accommodate that day.
So, is Royal Caribbean going to come down?
That's their, that's their ship size. Yeah. Yeah. And I mean, that's, that's the ship size of what they're, these different cruise lines are offering for a port agreement on that preferred date.
Talk to me about guaranteed minimums.
So, you know, guaranteed minimum is something, again, since we haven't had it, we're kind of at the mercy of weather in the cruise line. But the guaranteed minimum locks us in for either a dollar amount or a number of passengers. I mean, really, Disney guaranteed 120,000 passengers. And we put in the number that's based on the rate. Royal Caribbean did the opposite. They guaranteed a dollar amount. We backed it out into the number. That's why we give you both. So they're just, they're just locking in, saying, "We're committed to at least this." It might be more than that, but that's the guaranteed minimum. And if they don't provide it, then they have to match that dollar amount at least annually.
And why does Carnival Cruise Line not have a guaranteed minimum?
Just a choice on theirs. I mean, the one thing I can tell you with Carnival, it hasn't been, you know, "Boy, when are they coming next?" Right? I mean, they're here, they're committed. They're here 50, 60-plus times a year. So, I think that's probably the reason they're not going anywhere.
Who decided on this CPI-adjusted rate?
That was what they had offered, both the individuals had offered.
Oh.
They, I mean, on a term sheet. Keeping in mind, we still have to negotiate a final contract. And one of the provisions that we insist on in the final contract is whoever we partner with has to deal with all our business entities equally. That'll be part of the final agreement.
Oh, okay. So, for example, if Royal Caribbean is not planned fair, or whatever you want to call it, they would have to?
I mean, that's, or, that's, that's part of what we're committed to, to make sure that everybody, you know, not that they have to make a deal with every business entity on the island, but they have to treat them equally.
Right. Okay. And no exclusion, no exclusive anythings with anybody?
That's, that's where, that's already the conversations we've had with Disney and Carnival.
Okay, so let me ask you another thing. So, I see the preferred dates and shoulder seasons and whatever. So, Disney's only going to come in 2027, certain months of the year, May to September to May? Or no?
No. So Disney's proposal would be, they would want to come between September 15th and May 15th, on Tuesdays and Saturdays. And then Tuesdays available to them exclusively in the summer. So, summer year-round, but Tuesdays, Tuesdays year-round, but Tuesdays, Saturday in the shoulders and winter. And, you know, just, I don't think that they would, you know, of the 52 Tuesdays, they wouldn't be using 48 to 50 of them. It would be fewer than that. Whereas I think Carnival's been pretty close to, you know, weekly, weekly on their specific date that they want.
We don't really have to be the ones to talk about the preferred dates. That's what you'll do?
Well, I think, really, what, what we're looking for is a direction from council. I think these are going to be ongoing discussions with the three partners. We want to, you know, what is most important to council and the city? Is it the size of ship? Is it the number of times they come here? Is it the, what, what should we focus on in picking our partner? Keeping in mind, we're going to come back to you with recommended final agreements for your approval. Right now, we're just looking at kind of the criteria that's very important.
And Royal Caribbean is not really saying they're going to come once a week, 52 weeks out of the year? Or are they saying that's what they would do?
They're not, nobody's saying 52 weeks out of the year. They're really just looking to lock up that preferred date that they know going forward in the future, whether it's a three-year contract, five-year contract, they have Tuesday, they have Wednesday, whatever it might be. There's not a first-come, first-served, you know, to get your request in.
Yes, sir. Don.
I know it's a new day, but many years ago, Greg Bombard and I, and Mr. Sutcliffe, sat in Brian Bray's office, and we talked about, when is it too many cruise ships? When is, what are the best dates? What are the best dates in the summer? What's the best dates in the winter? And what we came up with then, which is why then I planned on getting these boats to be able to handle that, was...
Stay closer to the mic.
To handle, to handle that kind of, what we had talked about, was, you know, Monday, Tuesday was always Carnival, Inspiration, Imagination. Then, and I know Dave and Kevin have worked on this, you know, with what's happening today. But we had Monday, Tuesday was Carnival, Wednesday was Royal Caribbean, when they came back, and Thursday was Disney. Disney came Thursdays, when they came. And then, in the shoulder, on the, you know, off-season, they could come in on a Saturday, or somebody could. You know, that was really up to Greg Bombard because we got float times. It's all about the float times. I mean, we can sit here and talk about this all day long, but it's all about float times. So, that's kind of what we came up with back then. And that's when we made a plan, and that was probably about four or five years ago. And then, we kind of came up with a plan, "Okay, we're going to need these tenders, we're going to do this." And then Brian worked really hard, and then JJ on float five. We didn't have float five. So we had float five, and we moved some mornings around and did some things so we could use both sides of float five and not impact so much of Express. That was kind of the idea back then. I'll leave you with that.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel?
I think ship size is important, and I'm thankful to Carnival for looking at a different class to bring after feedback from the community. I think city staff and Carnival staff have done an absolutely amazing job. Volunteers with Love Catalina as well have done an amazing job managing the larger ship. But I also think that it can lead to overwhelm at times on systems and spaces. And so, I'm super appreciative to see that. I think, you know, their longevity in the community, their commitment to bringing people and being the first and continuing to do that is important. I was trying to, when we received this, trying to kind of map out like, okay, what would actually work, based on the options that are presented. And was thinking, if we do Royal on Mondays, Disney on Tuesdays, Carnival Wednesdays, I know it's a secondary choice, but that that would allow for each of the companies to have a date as their day of the week. And then Disney on Saturdays, I think, is kind of where I was figuring we would make most people the most happy. I appreciate also that both Carnival and Disney have the 750 warfitch plus the 150 increase. And that's kind of where I was at with it, so.
Yeah, and I think you're right on your points, one, two, three, and four. You know, but for the community, not so much for us, but the three a week is fine. And then, that doesn't include Nat Geo or those little small ones that come in. And, yeah, and I know Kevin's doing a really good job with all of this as well. So let me ask a question. Andrew, are you going to be providing shore service to Disney?
Yes.
Okay. Would you be providing it for Royal Caribbean as well?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So you'd be working, so you're not losing any business? Yeah. Okay. Yes, Elena?
Hi. I didn't plan on speaking again, but I do think it's important to note that there's a few different things going on with Royal Caribbean that may not always be on the forefront. But one of the things that affects my other business, Catalina Island Mermaids, I'm located in the Tour Plaza, so if I could take off my immersed hat for a moment and wear my own, I'd love that. But at Catalina Island Mermaids, one of the challenges that we come into is that I sometimes even close on Royal Caribbean cruise days because their shore excursions are picked up at a different location. So I don't get that foot traffic. So the choice made here today does greatly impact my business, Catalina Island Mermaids, and it will greatly impact Immersed as well, based on just solely the foot traffic that comes on those weekdays for me.
How does it, I'm sorry, how are you missed?
So based on the shore excursions that different cruise lines have, different cruise lines allow them to be picked out up in different areas, or require that they are picked up in different areas. So it draws the tour traffic out of the Tour Plaza on those days.
So your preference, you're saying if we had to choose, if we were trying to limit down the number of ships, Royal Caribbean would be at the bottom of your list, is basically what you're saying?
Yes, and I hate to make a...
No, no, that's okay.
No, it's a firm statement, but I, you know, it's tough to do that. But I do have to say that there have been Carnival, there have been cruise lines that accept small businesses. And I think that in a town that is grown and lifted up by the locals, there's only so many of us, and there's only so many entrepreneurs in this town. So, I know I'm one of the few, but I really appreciate your support on this one.
Well, and my understanding also, although I don't, we don't currently work with any of the cruise lines, but, is that Royal's commission structure for tours and activities is ridiculously high. It's, it's almost a 50/50 split in terms of what they're offering to businesses.
My experience in requesting a shore excursion with them, I was surprised to not receive any, very much feedback with a response. So it seemed that there, it was a no, but I didn't have much feedback on why. So, that was tough.
Yeah, exactly.
Hi. You want to say? With, regarding Royal Caribbean and all the different, Royal, Disney, Carnival, I find that Carnival customers are more likely to do a lot of excursions. Royal Caribbean is eh, you know, hit or miss. And a lot of their customers are doing a lot of different activities, and, and they do participate in water activities, land activities, and, you know, we're booked solid. And we don't have contracts with Carnival. But when they come in, our boats are full. So they do, they do spend money on, on excursions. And not so much Royal. It's just a different customer, but...
Yoli? Okay, Don, one more time.
Well, you asked a question of Andrew about if we're going to service the other cruise ships. So, one year to two years in advance, we are sent the plans for shell door heights. So we modify our boats, like, and then when they come through on a wave somewhere else, we can go and line up. So for Radiance, for Forenzy, for Royal, you know, we've had Royal stuff for a while. I mean, all of them, they tell us ahead of time. We can't just show up here and have it maybe work, you know?
Oh, exactly.
We, we got to be ready. So we usually go test somewhere else, usually in LA Harbor or Port of Long Beach. And so, we've already modified everything to fit the shell door heights of each ship. So to answer your question, yeah, we're, the planning is usually at least two years in advance, especially with Carnival's two ships. They're usually ahead of the other groups. But yeah, we're all ready to go with any of their ships.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else from council as far as input or direction?
The Forenzy is going to still be coming for a while.
The Forenzy currently is booked, yes. It currently has existing visits that are, that are on the calendar, yes.
Okay. And how, and Jim, you're here too, how are we doing with that larger ship? Because I know, I'm not, I haven't volunteered for the last three or four of them, and it's, does it seem to, what's the feedback on the big line that goes kind of around the corner?
Well, if I could just answer, I mean, we are, we have attempted to hire some part-time staff to handle that. We are still looking at that. I mean, the, this issue is more the long-term, the five, 10, 15 years out. We know we're going to have them here, and we're going to have to deal with those visits. Harbor's been doing a great job of going out there, and Harbor Eight having boots on the ground when Forenzy's here, when, when any cruise lines there, but mainly the Forenzy, so. It has its pluses and minuses. But, but I think at the end of the day, we can all agree, we just can't handle 5,000 passengers at once.
Exactly. Okay. All right.
You need any more, you just need...
I mean, I think, you know, unless there's other, I mean, what I'm hearing is, you know, really, the size of the ship is a critical factor, and, and that's, that seems to be the, you know, one of the driving forces and same, you know, as far as having, you know, we want a partner that's going to be here, that's going to be reliable, that we can trust, so that, you know, I think, I think we have some direction.
But we also want a partner that's going to partner.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now I'm getting concerned about Royal. You're not worried about Royal?
I think you're both saying the same thing, but, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I think, I do have some direction. I appreciate it. I want to just say, I appreciate, you know, Carnival being out here. They were out here last week. And, you know, from my standpoint, Leon Wright, I can make a phone call at our mole, he's in Miami, and I can watch the door open while I'm on the phone with him when I'm saying, you know, "We got to get this fixed." So, they're very responsive in that regard, and, you know, the challenges, they're aware of them, and they've been working with us, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, is there a motion to authorize?
Yes. Yeah. I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute port agreements incorporating the terms set forth.
A second? A second and call for the vote. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Last item, item eight, options for city...
Really? We're going to do this now, Mary?
Well, I'm just going to, let me, let me just run through this very, very quickly.
Mary?
Wait, you want to let everybody?
Yeah. Can we stand up and scratch?
No, I'm saying for rent control.
Rent control, guys, come on. God, we'll celebrate his birthday.
Just remember, the vote didn't pop up.
Vote didn't pop up.
Do you need to retake it for that vote?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
It didn't, the vote didn't pop up on the screen?
On the screen. Okay.
Do you want to post it again?
Can we close it out?
I closed, I closed it out already.
So you just say it was five, zero.
Or do you need a voice vote? She posted it, it just didn't show up on the screen.
I'm not sure if, do you prefer oral vote?
If you can just announce what it is, that's fine.
I thought she did, but it was so loud.
You did say, "Oh, I..." So bad.
Okay. We can go on the next item.
Thank you, guys. Happy birthday.
So this is the same staff report I've given you, I think, three or four times before. At the last meeting, we presented the options after the election, when the statewide rent control was, was not granted. So you still have the ability, you're still limited on certain rent controls. The issue that you asked was, and if you look at the staff report, starting on page... Starting on page...
134?
Three of the staff reporting, or, no, five of the staff reports, examples of tenant protections, other cities. The question that you asked is, are these allowable, given the Costa-Hawkins Law? The answer is yes. So what we're looking for, either tonight, or if you want to consider, is if you are interested in adopting a rent control for Avalon, what would it be? And what other, if any, tenant protections would you like us to come back to you with the draft ordinance? If you want some time to think about it, we can, we can just have this as an agenda item when there's a little thing, maybe a little shorter. But again, you have a wide variety of options that are legal. It's just a matter of what you want to do. And the one issue is, if you put on any rent control, there's a secondary body you're going to have to create, which is a rent stabilization, because you cannot just put rent control and say, "That's it." You have to have the ability of landlords to come to some body and say, again, I'm going to mention this like the 10 times come out of my mouth, for due process, that they have the right to say, "What your regulations are not fair to me, and I, I want an exemption from this rent control." And so, many cities have another body do that. A couple have themselves, does the council do that? But then you're, you're getting involved in those issues. So would be a... So, would be a separate body called a rent stabilization board.
Can that be part of city staff?
You can have, you, you, yeah, you could, you could point a, a staff member to that. You could make it all staff, or you could have it be members of the public and staff.
How many people does it have to be?
Well, it can be, I would recommend, at least three, at least three.
The size of this town, okay.
But, but, you know, at least three, and given our sometimes difficulty in getting planning commissioners, you know, between, I'd say, three or five.
Yeah.
You got to make it an, an odd number in case there's tie votes.
Can the planning commission act as the rent stabilization?
If you appoint them, so, yes, they can.
They'll be dropping like flies.
Yeah, maybe they care about rent stabilization.
But you could also, you know, make it so that it, it only, well, the planning commission only meets once a month anyway, but, you know, so...
I think that's enough for, for, yeah.
Right, so, yeah, I, I think that would, wouldn't be overburdening.
I feel like it's also an opportunity for more members of the public to get involved.
Boy, sure, good, very good point. Okay, so, I, a couple of little questions. For an eviction by the landlord, I'm on page one, two, basically three, it says the landlord or family member also must move in with 90 days of the tenant moving out and stay in the unit for at least a year. Who is going to monitor that? Who's going to monitor that? Right here, B. That's the first question, how do they monitor that? Then, specifically, the city of the land can only adopt a rent control measure that applies to apartments that receive their certificate prior to February 1995.
That's most of your city. That's most of the city. That's most of the city. It's prior to, you don't really have any new apartments built.
Triana's like the newest.
Well, the guy who has the ADU and the one that's on the corner beacon and whatever, right there beacon and whatever.
Right, because he tore down and, yeah, so, that's...
There may, there may be, I mean, I think, we tried to look through our records and then it was difficult to find how many, but it's very, very minimal. So, this is going to apply to most of your rental units in the city and its apartments. Remember, this is...
Yeah, those are apartments.
Not single families.
Not single family.
Okay. So, another question on Culver City. Culver City has adopted a series of more expansive rent control and tenant protections than under state law. How do we determine fair market value?
Well, they...
How do we fair market rents? How do we figure fair market rents in this town?
Well, you'd have to, what Culver City does, because the city attorney's a friend of mine, is, is they have someone in staff that, that works with an outside consultant to survey the rental market and come up with that, what that figure is.
Oh, it can't just be that we know that these are outrageous fair markets.
We can't say it's actually worth 750, but you're charging 27.
No, you have to have empirical evidence on that. And so, frankly, cities with more resources do that, others just impose the 3%, 4%, you know, market.
Can we also impose a limit on the amount they can raise the rent on turnover?
If somebody just vacates and now they re-rent it.
Yeah, so, like I was talking to my landlord, you know, and I might be leaving and all that kind of stuff, and I, I'm up to 1,869 or something like that, right? And she said, okay, new move-in is 2,500. And, ah, yeah.
I believe there's some ability to do that under the state law.
That would be great, because, and I had another one, is, is there, so, my landlord raises the rent every year just because state law says you can. Is there some way we can build into this, not just for my landlord, but for everybody else? You have, in order to raise the rent annually, you have to have some sort of improvements?
Well...
Well, isn't Sacramento takes into account the annual cost of living as well?
You take into account annual cost of living. And so, again, part of...
But that's already, that, the way state law is right now, it's 5% plus CPI, which is the annual cost of living. And it, ceiling's out at 10%. So, if the annual cost of living brings you up to eight, then they're legally allowed to raise it 8%, you know?
Right, right.
But never over 10. But, I'm, I'm just, regardless of that, and I know that that's the law, but regardless, I mean, seriously, there is no reason to raise the rent in this dilapidated building that has no improvements, I've lived there for 18 years, no improvements, no heat, no nothing, and they are legally required to provide heat.
And it's not just, it's not just a little plug-in either.
Right, well, I have my own plug-ins that I bought, but, you know, so, those kinds of things, because I know that we tried to do that with the committee, the inspection and all that kind of stuff. So, another question was, can we limit the landlord if, if there are repairs to be made? A lot of people don't talk to their landlords because they're afraid that he'll raise, they'll raise the rent if they get something fixed. Can we control that?
You can use that as a factor, but making an outright bar to raising rents when you have inflation is probably going to, the rents, you would have to have an ability of the landlord to say, inflation's up, my costs are up, and I have to be able to, to recoup that regardless of whether I do improvements. But it's a factor. But we can, I don't know if any, I'm not aware of any city that has required improvements to raise rent.
But, but you're hearing me, though, because there's a lot of situations like this.
I understand that, I understand.
Well, once they come in and they repaint the place or whatever, they're going to say, okay, that's worth $2,500. And then if we would say, no, that's, they go for this little body, and they would say, but this is what it is, and they prove their hardship case, and then they can still raise the rent, based on these cities here. Cities here.
Right, so, yeah, I'm just wondering how, I mean, great research, I like Culver City a lot, there's a lot of cool stuff in there, but, you know, I just don't know what legally we can put in there. And I'm trying to figure out all of the stuff that's going on in this town to try and control it, because I've, I've heard people tell me that their landlord raises their rent like 150%, and they don't do anything about it. I'm like, no, that's illegal, you can't do that.
Yes.
So, how, how do we stop this?
I don't know, I mean, there's so many things to consider. There's also relocation and all of that.
Right, I was just going to say that relocation.
That's, and that's...
You, I mean, I've, I've given you a lot of information, what I'm basically saying is, everything in here, you asked me to do some research to see if this was legal. Yes, it is. And it's not, it's not impacted by the Costa Hawkins Act, which is what you asked for.
Right.
So, now it's basically, this is a cafeteria of items.
Right. So, I, I actually...
You provide direction and we'll come back, or we can have a more detailed study, study session.
Let's just ask one question overall. Do we want to tackle this?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
So, I, I...
The city session is a good idea.
I looked up years, so, Bahia Vista was built in 78, Sol Vista 74, Canyon Terrace 64, Fairview Terrace 78, Tremont Apartments 83, so right under there, Euclidus 93, so right under there, and Hamilton Cove 86. So, we've got a lot of legal ones that we can help people out.
So, we'll tackle this.
Yes, please. What about a luxury, a luxury unit has two bedrooms or less, is located in a complex with at least 25 dwelling units, that, so that would be Sol Vista...
One is over $4,000, I think, is the other caveat for that.
Yeah, well, I got somebody...
So, that could be Hamilton Cove.
Summer close, Hamilton, I think, would apply to that, yeah.
And there might be some places that are...
Exactly, yeah.
But, but how do we know?
You were not wrong.
How we know? How are we going to know what all these rents are?
Our community has to tell us when they're out of line.
Yeah, that's a part, part of it, and, and what we've seen in West Hollywood is really, really active.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're really active. That is the community coming and trusting that the rent stabilization board will have these hearings on a timely basis, and that, that they're heard, we have an attorney attend every single one of those, because there's, there's just a lot of work associated with that. But, but it's all driven by tenants raising the issue to the city and then the city initiating action.
And our citizens are afraid to say anything.
Right. But hopefully, we can change that, because I think this is a very, very important issue, and I'm sorry that it got put onto such a packed agenda and...
It's okay.
You know, but I...
Like, admin-wise and, and cost-wise, if we start a board, are we okay?
We start a board, are we a rent stabilization board?
Yeah, I mean, we would have a hearing here, right?
The cost is going to be the administrative fee. It'll, it'll, after setting it up, it'll frankly be the cost of having a meeting, and you decide whether you want to have an attorney present or not. And we, we usually do those via Zoom, except West Hollywood likes us there in person.
I mean, it might make sense for the first few to have in person, just to get everyone used to what's going to happen.
And we have attorneys that this is really what they do. I mean, you know, this is, this is our area, so...
So, it's like, oh, no.
So, we'll let you, let this marinate and we'll, we'll come back with some, you've asked some questions today.
I'll sleep on it.
We'll come back and then we'll have a more dedicated session to this.
Okay, I just have one more question. It was brought up early about the letter from Mr. Horvitz. And you all got that, city manager?
Yeah, which one, sorry.
About, I'm sorry, about the smoking and all of that, can you...
I talked about that when in my comment.
I know, but, but, do we want, definitely want to say we want the city to really pursue that with the golf cart rental places and whatever, and not just, it would be nice if they did that? Do we want to kind of push that a little fur, further?
Yeah, I mean...
Well, Conrato replied and said that they have all the, the signs in the cars and they have zero tolerance and everything.
Yeah, they do. I mean, we, I talked to them and they're, they're like, yeah, we make that clear, that's not encouraged, but they get up there and, at three palms and...
People are just jerks.
What are you going to do?
No, okay.
Sometimes.
Okay, so, they have no smoking details. Well, okay, he, he's asking for vendor maps that show fire zones, well, really, the whole town is a fire zone, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sample match.
So, maybe we could increase signage, you know, around, you know, three palms or whatever.
I mean, I'm guessing like more than...
Everybody supports that idea, it's just how do you enforce that?
They can't do like a sticker on their cart, I mean...
It's already on there.
It's on, it's on the windshield.
Yeah, it's everywhere.
No smoking in golf cart.
Okay. If, if you can't get people to turn on and off their blinkers, right? Oh, and that's locals as well as visitors. Okay, maybe use a turn.
Just even though we're going to do the, the, it's going to be remote, just because that's right after, the day after.
Yeah, 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 yeah.